Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for December 13th, 2011. Roberta, would you please call the role of our last meeting of the year?
Supervisor Bennett. Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
And Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Cheers.
Good Christmas cheer. This morning, for our moment of inspiration, I've invited Ariana Wood, a Lorena High School student. Ariana is 14 years old and a freshman there, and she's going to come up to the microphone there and she's going to discuss her impressive findings from her eighth grade science fair project, which was entitled "Improving the Food Supply and Environment Worldwide Using Adjuvants to Augment Organic and Conventional Herbicides." The project qualified for county level competition at Lorena High School, then went on to win first place at the 2011 Ventura County Science Fair in the Amgen Biochemistry Division. It was also selected for a special award by the San Bueno Ventura section of the Society of Women Engineers, and she then moved on to compete at the 2011 California State Science Fair, where she won first place in the Plant Biology Division. It was the only project from Ventura County to take a first place, and Ariana, just at 14 years old, has a potentially budding career as a scientist. If you'd like to come on up to the microphone, tell us a little bit. I don't actually know what an adjuvant is, but...
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here today. I'd first like to thank my school, Lorena, for providing me the education that which allowed me to actually complete this project, and then also my science teacher, Mrs. Usher, and my principal, Dr. Gomez, who's actually here today. And so, first of all, I just wanted to give you a little background information. Weeds have been a detriment to farmers for centuries because they sap a crop's precious nutrients, such as sunlight, water, soil. And so, every couple of weeks, I'd go out with my dad to a young citrus orchard we have, and I'd help him spray the young weeds that winterize among the citrus trees. And so, as I would spray these weeds and wash them by, I wondered if there was a more cost-effective and environmentally friendly way to kill these weeds. So, I took a weed killer, glyphosate, which is more commonly known as Roundup, and I varied levels of it and paired it with ammonium sulfate, which is an adjuvant, meaning additive, and surfactant, meaning it would spread the weed killer evenly across the leaf, and it would also increase a weed's cuticular permeability, which means that it would allow the weed killer to go right in and kill the weed. And then also, what I had to do was pair the ammonium sulfate to the water hardness level of the mixture. So, I had to go down to my water district, Camero's Water District, and I had to give a water sample to the nice scientist there, and he in turn gave me back a number to pair it to. And so, I took all this back to my science teacher, and she asked me, "Well, what about organic?" Now, I hadn't really thought of that, but I thought that that would be a great thing to think about, and so, I went home and I found an organic herbicide, D-limonin, and I decided that I would also pair varied levels of ammonium sulfate with that. However, it would only act as a surfactant, which again, just means it would spread it evenly across the leaf. And so, I was trained to use a backpack sprayer, and so, now, I then sprayed my now 11 conditions over six-foot-by-10-foot plots of land with buffers in between, and I measured all of this over a span of four weeks regularly. And so, during the first two weeks, nothing much happened, but then during the third week, deaths spiked in conditions which contain the ammonium sulfate. And so, my very, very astounding results were that I had taken 100% of the dose of the Roundup, and I had cut it in half and added ammonium sulfate to it, and that did just as well, just as well as the 100% Roundup dose, which means that farmers could just go out and put less, use less of the glyphosate over longer periods of time, longer swaths of land, and so, that puts less poison into the ground and is also a huge cost savings. And now, farmers that didn't think they could afford weed killer could now afford it because you could just use so much more of it. And then also, what I found was very interesting was that when the organic was used just by itself, it didn't do very well, but when I added the ammonium sulfate, the organic was, the effectiveness was roughly doubled, and so, I found an even better organic option. And so, all of this just ultimately leads to much healthier crops and a much better food supply and environment worldwide.
That is remarkable, and a savings too, I know.
And you're how old?
14.
Well, I hope our people out here control our environment understood some of that. That was tremendous.
Wow, wow.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
You know, I want to thank you tremendously because, you know, we always read in the paper about our youth, you know, doing X and Y and the bad things, and 99% of the paper comes out with those horrible things that our youth do, but you're that 1% that helps us out, that makes our youth excel, you know, and have you patented this? I think it's important.
No, I haven't, but...
Not only are you saving dollars and you helping the environment, and I'm going to commend you for 14-year-old, my goodness.
Thank you so much.
You know, you're doing excellent, and I want to commend you for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I know that the county of Ventura actually is working in, with our Watershed Protection District in removing Arundo and using glyphosate, the Roundup, and the idea that we may even be able to use your work to be able to save funds and do better for the environment. So, already, I think you're making a progress for the world here, so. Did you want to comment, Mr. Powers?
I did, just real quick, I really appreciated that you explained what each chemical did. I mean, I even understood what you were saying. Most of it, it was very impressive.
She probably had to dumb it down for us.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, and congratulations to your parents, and we'll come down and take a photo, but in the meantime, would you please lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could, I just get a...
Sure.
The board line to have you?
We wish you well.
Yeah? Okay. Mom, would that be in?
Look at the school.
So, you have a case for those public schools. This is right now that Rondo doesn't want to...
Thank you so much for having me.
Good night. Thank you. But, go ahead, give me yours. Okay, but we're in little spots on there, can you hold on a second? Okay. Hey, can we kind of get a little cozy here? Okay, are we ready? There you go. Yes. Okay, one, two, three. Okay, now, it's deep anymore. Okay, ready? All right. Thank you. Your future dear. Oh, thank you. So, thank you. I thought it was a little long. Yes. Yes. I'm struggling with this whole thing. Please. Just help us. Oh. Just help me. Okay. Thank you. Perfect. All right, we'll be hearing more of that. Congratulations. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you so much.
Ariana. That's right. Well, that was a good moment of inspiration, and at this time, we can go to our minutes of the meeting of November 15th, and we can have a motion to approve those minutes. We have a motion from Supervisor Zaragoza and a second from Supervisor Foy. And if we could all please vote. Okay, and that passes on a 4-0, and I will now go to our agenda review, and I will turn them over to Mr. CEO, Mike Powers.
Thank you, Chair Parks. Do have a couple of items this morning. There's a regular agenda item 35, and we request that we hear that right after times certain item 25.
Okay.
That's the Capital Projects 25 is, and 35 is the auditor's item. We have a correspondence agenda item 37, should have been, should have referred to the Human Resources Department, not the Human Services Agency. There's an addendum agenda, regular agenda, from CEO's office, item 39, consideration of and adoption of a joint resolution with the City of Simi Valley agreeing to the exchange of property tax revenue for the transfer of library services. And with respect to that item, we would request that your board hear closed session item 29 before that item 39.
Okay.
And that's it. Thank you.
And this is my last one this year. See if I can get it right. All right, next on our agenda. We have most of our candidates. And that is approved on a 4-0. And then, our next agenda item, our consent agenda items 10 through 22, unless there are any requests or questions, we have a... We have a motion to approve items 10 through 22 on our consent agenda, and a second from Supervisor Long, if we could please vote. That's approved on a 4-0, and we can move on to our next agenda item, which is public comments. Do we have any public comment cards? Seeing none. We can then move on to our board comments, and I will turn it over to Supervisor Foy, if you'd like to go first.
I do, but I want to say that I have no adjournments, so that's wonderful news, and not a lot to say, but I just do want to wish everybody a wonderful holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Long, do you have any comments?
I do. Yes, I do. Hold just a second, please. I do have a short list of adjournment memories, but, and would like to do that, a Camero, Santa Paula resident will be missed by the community. Like to just say that I was able to participate in the Management Council Holiday Party last Friday night, and I know we had some award recipients, and I believe that in January, we'll have a brief little report on that, and we can celebrate again with those who are recognized as doing such outstanding service in our county for our residents. And also, that I had a chance to attend the Coastal Association of Realtors Luncheon installation, and it was, it was one very, always is a full house and very exciting. They picked their best affiliate of the year and broker, owner, manager, and Realtor of the year. But, the incoming president, Cindy Diaz-Telli, who is their 2012 president, is the first Latina woman to be president of the Coastal Association of Realtors, and she really just spoke wonderfully about the challenges for their industry and yet the hope and optimism they have, and it was, it was a wonderful way, another holiday feel-good. And then, okay, lastly, I committed last week to provide to the board just some information on the proposed constitutional protection amendment that CSAC is proposing to put on the ballot, and so, I have for you just the background information as provided frankly to the Board of Directors. I didn't try to editorialize, and I, wait a minute, I think I have a, let's see how this was put together here. Okay. So, you have the background on the proposed initiative, and then the basic proposal put forward to the Attorney General. It has not yet been signed off for language and summary by the AG, but it should be by the 29th, if you pass that down. I'm sorry, I sort of handed these out earlier. It should be by the 29th of December. It will be heard by the Board of Directors on the 5th of January. I will be going up to Sacramento to participate in that. This is a constitutional amendment that is proposed by CSAC that does not have, did everybody get one down there? You have one? Okay, okay. Does not propose new revenues. It does propose a baseline of protection, starting with this, if you'd give that to County Council, so he has it too. Emma Bertha, copy for you. A baseline of protection that has, secures the existing fiscal status with the counties as far as the current funding commitments that have come through to the counties, and it does call for guarantees for growth, dedicating the existing sales tax and use revenues and the vehicle license fee, and again, it starts with the fiscal year 2011 and '12. And it, I guess I'll just, it's a constitutional amendment that will put another lock on the lockbox in place in addition to Prop 1A that was passed by the voters years ago, that will clearly say the state cannot take money from local government, and they have to continue to fund us with the revenues we have and also to protect us in the future. It's not, I'll tell you that there's, the support that we have so far is from the Sheriff's Association, and there's some concern from the League of Cities, the police chiefs, the mayors, and part of the concern, as you'd all guess, is that there's one piece of pie, and we're not proposing new revenues, we're proposing that a piece of pie that dedicates funds to the counties is stable and is protected by the constitutional amendment, and that has concerns for other folks who keep trying to divvy up the same piece of pie. So, I just bring it to you, no editorial comment, it'll be further discussed on the 5th at CSAC. It's tough, and I'm not sure where the board will go. It, as you know, the governor's put out a, his own initiative, and his initiative does call for different revenue streams and allocations on new taxes, and that too will be discussed by CSAC on the 5th. The CSAC bylaws call for majority of the members of CSAC, not just those who are present, but the majority of the members, to vote on any initiative that goes forward in a positive way. So, I don't know if you have more questions, any questions, or anything that, if you've had, you know, you'll have a chance to read this, we can discuss it, obviously, when we get back together on the 10th, I'll have more news and see how it rolls out.
You know, my only comment is whenever we start locking in revenue sources and dedications, it lessens the flexibility of the legislature to move with the times, and that's just my little bit of concern.
I absolutely agree, and, you know, we see that even with the schools that have a secured lock-in of the, of the piece of pie, there have been ways that the legislators have been able to either get around to either enhance that or take away from that, so...
No guarantees?
No, no guarantees.
Commander Chair, I agree on two, you know, that, that we, I'm glad that CSAC and the cities are, other agencies are getting together to protect this unfunded mandate, you know, that the state is proposing. We currently only have just a few months of funding for, for example, the realignment, but how do we fund the future realignment processes happening and some of the other cuts? So, I think that the League of Cities has done the right thing, the cities are doing the right thing in protecting the funding that is, that is used right here for local efforts and to assist our constituents right here on the, at the local level, because we have to face them on a, on a daily basis, and they call us with concerns, and, but I think it's important that we, that we look at this initiative and that we all write letters to, to protect, you know, the, or to get funding to, in order to, to realize those unfunded mandates.
Any comments, Supervisor?
No, I, you know, it's, you know, yeah, I will, because again, until the directors really take, hear back from the AG and there's really something for us to, to chew on, it's all pretty, it's just pretty limited and what's, there's nothing for us to really throw down at this point, so.
Can you tell us?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
All right, Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes, you know, I want to adjourn in memory of the folks on this list, and one individual that I like to bring out is one of my nieces over in Madera, California, passed away at the age of 22. He had a brain hemorrhaging and passed away 4.0, she was going for her RN, she worked over in Fresno and, and one of the major hospitals there, and we lost her just the other day, so, so I'm going to have to go over to, not have to, I will be going over to Madera around the next couple of days, but I want to adjourn on her memory, on her memory, and it's Danielle Monique, you know, from, from Madera. So, I'll put this here, and also, on the bright side of things, we, Sunday, we, I participated in Santa to the Sea. We had several thousand participants that ran the 5K and also the half marathon, and I put together a team, the Zaragoza team, that included Mr. Mike Powers, our CEO, Dave Smith from United Way, myself, on the 5K run, and Mike, you know, being a superstar, came in number two, second place, and did a great job running.
He slipped.
Again, he's slipping, well, he became, became number one over in San Francisco in CSAC and number two here, so. And then, I, I placed, I did very good, you know, Dave Smith and I came in together. We, also, one of the things that we had, another fund that, that we put together, and we collected, Mike and I and, and Dave, about a thousand-plus dollars towards a special fund for... Mike and I and, and Dave, about a thousand-plus dollars towards a special fund for, for United Way. And we collected a lot of gifts, over probably 2,000-some gifts for the kids over in Nylon Acres. Those gifts are probably, those kids are probably, those gifts will provide those children with gifts for Christmas that probably wouldn't have a, a Christmas gift. And also, we're providing funds, you know, for scholarships for the kids at Ochsner College. So I want to thank Mike Barber and Santa to the Sea and all the participants, excuse me, that participated. And there was many, many participants. We had runners, I understand, from, from New York, from Texas, across the US, and, and I think one runner from Canada. So I think it was, it was great. It was a cold day, cold morning, but it was good for, for running purposes. Also, I also like to share some concerns that we had three major fires in Ochsner. We had about 200-some people that were displaced because of the, of those fires and, and one death. And I want to thank Chief Omelia and Chief Roper from, Chief Omelia from Ochsner and Roper from Ventura County for the great work and also thank the firefighters. And this really benefited the, the county and the 5th District. And thank you for the co-op, the mutual aid, the great partnership that we have with, with the fire departments. And it's very important, I think, to share with the, our residents that for them to have a great and safe holiday, a worry-free holiday for their family and their loved ones, that they check their smoke detectors, make sure that their smoke detectors have batteries in them, make sure that they don't overload their, their electrical outlets when they set up the Christmas trees. In fact, I was setting up my Christmas tree and we had a little, you know, wires going all over the place and I told my wife, "Stop, we have to get a, a surge suppressor, we have to put some additional outlets to." Make sure that your Christmas tree is watered and also remove all the needles from the, dry needles from the Christmas tree. And of course, unplug the, your tree lights and so forth when, when you leave the house. And also, one of the important things that probably caused a lot of those fires was to use unapproved heaters, you know, space heaters and heaters that are, that are not meant for, for, to warm up the house, especially with those cold nights. And a lot of people use their stoves, you know, to heat up, you know, the, the home and it's not appropriate to use your, your cooking stove, you know, to heat up the, your home. And, and to follow some of the simple rules can save your life. And again, like I mentioned before, having the smoke detector and carbon monoxide units working is extremely important. And also, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday and follow those rules and keep safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Zaragoza. Well, I'd like to start off by congratulating Westlake High School, which has remained unbeaten with a 49-42 victory over Oaks Christian School. Kind of neighbors battling neighbors, but, uh, Westlake won. And as a result of that, they're going on for the first time ever to the state open division contest, CIF bowl game. So that's pretty exciting. The game was very exciting, too. Changed lead every once in a while and Westlake prevailed. Yay! Also, I enjoyed, as was mentioned, the Management Council Christmas party and I look forward to bringing the award winners. But obviously, all those who are nominated were our winners and it really says a lot about Ventura County and, and our government. So I look forward to that. Also, I attended with Supervisor Zaragoza the LULAC Annual Leaders Breakfast. So it was nice to see so many members of the community out for that and a lot of the elected officials enjoyed that. And interesting facts on this day in history. 2000, Vice President Al Gore reluctantly conceded defeat to Texas Governor George W. Bush in his bid for the presidency, following weeks of legal battles over the recounting of votes in Florida, where "chaz" became a word in the dictionary. And 2003, after spending nine months on the run, former Iraqi dictator Saddam Hussein was captured on this day also. And then just want to wish everybody a wonderful holiday. I know, I do have one person that I'd asked that we close in honor of. And that concludes my comments. Mr. Powers, you have a request.
If that's okay. Just real quick, I wanted to thank the Management Council Board, Roberta Rodriguez, Kristi Madden for putting on the Management Council event Friday night. It was really a great turnout, great event and very important, especially during these difficult times, I think, to come together and acknowledge the great work of the county managers here and the leadership team. So appreciate Board members being there and, yeah, it was a good night, so thank you.
That's nice. And with that, it concludes our board comments and we'll go to our regular agenda now. And we'll start off with the Human Services Agency on our Workforce Investment Board. And we have some recommendations on reappointments and appointments. Good morning.
We do. Good morning. Morning, men and chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers. My name is Talia Barrera with the Workforce Investment Board of Ventura County. And item 33 before you is a recommendation to reappoint four current members and appoint one new member in good standing to the Workforce Investment Board to a two-year, two-year term. The new member is Melissa Rauch with Ochsner in Simi Valley. The current members are Will Berg with the Ochsner Harbor District in Porboinimi, Anthony Coronas with National Bank of California in Westlake, Paul Madakovich with SEIU, United Healthcare Workers in Ochsner, and Jesus Torres with Verizon in Thousand Oaks. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this forward. Do we have any questions? No, but I do see a motion from Supervisor Long and a second from Supervisor Zaragoza. And if we could all vote?
Take the willing to serve.
Yes.
Yes. We have a good board. Thank you.
And that is approved unanimously, 4-0. Thank you for that. Our next agenda item is on our Ventura County Library, a very exciting agenda item. I'll do it if no one else will. No, where's our staff person?
I see Mark is there.
All right, this is Ventura County Library?
Yes.
An exciting item on here. Oh, I would think the staff would love to be here for it, to accept any proceeds received from the Bearden Eaton Estate to benefit the Avenue Library. Okay?
We have someone's question.
All right.
What a gift this is.
Yes, a nice time of the year to...
Hi, I'm Dale Redfield. I'm acting deputy director currently while Jackie's out on medical. And it was a complete surprise to get this bequest. And we're happy that Avenue Library is the recipient because there's probably no better deserving library.
That is very nice.
Thank you, Julie.
And our county's fortunate to have such giving people there and people, there are, you know, people just love libraries and to, to request this to the county is very special. So with that, we have a motion to approve this from Supervisor Long.
Thank you.
And a second from Supervisor Zaragoza. If we could all vote. All right, then we're going to hold off on item 35 and go to our correspondence. Agenda items 36 through 38. And that is a motion from Supervisor Zaragoza. Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
My screen is dirty.
A second from Supervisor Peter Seifey, if we could all please vote. All right. And that concludes our correspondence agenda, our regular agenda other than 35. And right now, we're going to go to closed session and then be back for our 9:45 Time Certain.[1134.91]
We're coming back to our regular board meeting of December 13th, 2011. It is a special board meeting in the sense that it's our last meeting before the holidays. And we have a very special presentation by the Ventura County Christmas Carolers. So I'll turn it over to you. Ladies and gentlemen, you have some songs. First, we have some instruments of our own.
Good morning and happy holiday. My name is Lawrence Lee, and I'm representing this fine group of elves behind me. We're kind of call ourselves the Melodic County Government Center Carolers. And what we're here today for is we're here to entice you to come to our sing-along next Tuesday at, what time were you starting? 12 o'clock, 12 o'clock, and we'll be in the Lower Plaza. Now, you'll probably notice that there's instruments and words in front of you. This is truly a sing-along for all the county employees because we just believe that we do so much for the county and we really enjoy working here. But at Christmas time, we really want to come together and just wish everyone a happy holiday and a safe and productive new year. So what we're going to do is we're going to give you a little teaser, Winter Wonderland. And don't worry if you don't quite sing on key because I can invent one for you. Okay? So with that said, let me introduce our group here. We have some of our people here, unfortunately, some are sick. But these fine people took off from their jobs, and hopefully they instructed their supervisors that they've done so. But on guitar here, we have Clem Morales with the Recorder's Office. We have Vicky Estora with Public Works. We also have Chris Hook with Public Works. We have Elaine Bagenting with County Council. Right behind me, we have Olivia Lopez with our Elections Division. Next to her, we have Judy Allen, who is with Public Works. Celia Baget with County Clerk, I mean, excuse me, County Clerk and Recorders. And last but not least, we have Mickey Bouchard with GSA. And I am a vagrant, no, no. I work with the County Clerk Recorder's Office where we're proud to serve the county of Ventura, and our head is Mark A. Lund.
The white-haired guy.
Want to buy me some extra time at the end of the year. So with that said, let us start with Winter Wonderland.
(Singing) Spring of the week, I miss me. In the rain, clouds just me. A beautiful sight, we're happy tonight. Walking in a winter wonderland. Cold wind, the moonrise. Did you say, "It's a new day"? The season's short, and we go along. Walking in a winter wonderland. In the bed, we can build a snowman. And pretend that here's part of town. You'll say, "I am married," and say, "No, man." But you can meet the solid, true sound. Make it all, make it fire. As we dream by the fire. The place of the play, the present we gave. Walking in a winter wonderland. In the bed, we can build a snowman. And pretend that here's part of town. You'll say, "I am married," and say, "No, man." But you can meet the solid, true sound. Make it all, make it fire. As we dream by the fire. The place of the play, the present we gave. Walking in a winter wonderland. Walking in a winter wonderland. Walking in a winter wonderland.
Again, we would like to invite you all, as well as all county employees, to our performance on December 20th at 12 o'clock in the Lower Plaza Assembly Room. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Get those people back to work, Mark.
Thank you so much for gracing us with your wonderful music. Thank you. It does put us in the mood. So on to our next agenda item. We don't need a receive and file for that one, I don't think. And it would be item 24. This is a 10:00 AM, oh, from the Grinch. I think so. Our next item is a public hearing regarding adoption of resolution approving water rate adjustments. And I will call up our Mr. Pacala. Is he available? And this is regarding Bell Canyon. I know that the item was voted on by the Advisory Board in Bell Canyon Water Works, District Number 17, and they did unanimously approve the recommendation. But I believe we had two letters of opposition on this. One was complaining about the fact that the water rate was increasing faster than the rate of inflation. Mr. Pacala.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers. Ready Pacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. As you said, this item is a public hearing for the proposed water rate increase for Winter County Water Works District Number 17. District imports 100% of its water from Metropolitan through Cayegus. In addition, we also pump more than 800 feet from Simi Valley to bring this water to community of Bell Canyon. The imported water rates are going up by 8% for calendar year 2012, and the Edison power charges are also increasing. charges are also increasing. We prepared a detailed water rate analysis and presented to the Citizens Advisory Committee appointed by your board. On September 27th, Advisory Committee unanimously concurred with a 6% commodity rate increase beginning calendar year 2012 January. As your board is aware, water rates are subject to Proposition 218 protest hearings, and there are two letters that were received by the clerk of your board, and they have been included in your staff report. We are recommending that your board approve our recommendations in our staff report. And that concludes my verbal presentation. I'll be glad to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. And because we did get one comment letter, I think, from the Cubrics who were concerned about the rate increase, they have a one-acre lot, they're using drip irrigation, and their complaint, among others, was that the increase is more than the cost of inflation, and I wonder if you could address that?
Well, again, really, we buy entire water supply, and our costs are going up by 8%. In addition, as I mentioned, we pump the water more than 800 feet to bring the water to Bell Canyon. Really, this is passing through the costs of increased costs to the districts.
Okay, so we're not taking any at the county level, this is just passing the cost for the electricity and for the cost of the water that we purchase for them?
Yes, ma'am.
And directly passing that on to them? Otherwise, we'd be subsidizing it.
Well, otherwise, we will be in trouble in the future
Yes.
...to replace the lines and to take care of the maintenance of the water system.
And it was unanimously approved by the Advisory Committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. With that, I will go ahead and make the motion.
What was last year's ready? Do you remember?
Last year, the rate increase was 10%.
So I noticed that you've been able to, even though water costs are still going up, electricity costs, they've all come down a little bit, they're not going up at what they did, but you've still been able to find ways to try to be a little more creative and try to keep these down. I know before we were 10, 12, 15, 20, 22%.
Yes, sir.
And you've been gracious enough to keep coming back. But at least these are in some reasonableness. I mean, it's still 6%. I agree, it's still very expensive, but 6% on a very big number gets very expensive for people, but at least they're getting a little bit more reasonable. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And we do have a tiered system, so the more that you save, you have a better chance of getting a lower rate. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. We do have a three-tiered rate structure.
Okay, so if we could please vote, we have a motion Supervisor Parks, me, and then second by Supervisor Long. And that passes?
Thank you. Happy holidays to you all.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you too. And that gives us a little bit of time, about 25 minutes, so we'll go back to closed session. Good morning again. We're coming back to our 10:30 certain on our agenda. This is a presentation on our long-term capital projects planning and our debt service, actually it says plural, debt services, so.
Well, thank you, Chair Parks, just and board members, just real quick. So typically, these items are discussed during the budget time. What we wanted to do is to bring this to you mid-year so we could have sort of a more full discussion and layout for you of the significant capital improvement projects that the departments are moving forward with and the annual debt service payments, and sort of give you a picture of where we are now and where we're looking to go in the future. So with that, I'll turn it over to our CFO, Ms. Kudris.
Thank you. And of course, if you have questions as we move through this process, please interrupt me. As long as they're not difficult. I think it's overview, the emphasis of this presentation, again, is on the general fund and the general fund debt service. We will touch quite a bit on non-general fund, but in general, the non-general fund departments will be covering their own debt service, so it won't, doesn't have an impact to the general fund per se. So it does not, but it also includes items primarily in excess of half a million dollars because generally, we will not borrow for something that's less than, in that range. I mean, that's just, it's not a rule, it's not a hard and fast rule, but it's kind of a rule of thumb. When you get below that amount, it makes more sense to just go and try to pay cash for those, for those items. It does not include the Public Works Long-Term Plan in the Roads Department. They present that every year, same with their watershed protection, those types of things. They do those every year as part of their process. Fire Department is excluded also. Generally speaking, Fire Department, again, presents your board with their five-year capital plan once a year, and the airports does the same. We do have a couple airport projects on here, just to let you know that they're part of the system, but in general, some, not all of the airport projects are included in this. It is consistent with the annual capital improvement plan that we present to your board in the, right at the budget time. It's consistent with that project, that plan, and it's a reminder, it's a long-term planning resource, and again, it's subject to change, subject to change of your board, subject to change of priorities and projects and those types of things. So this is just an overview of how we prioritize. And this is in, from our debt policy in the administration manual. And clearly, I think it's pretty simple to say life and safety concerns are a top priority relative to issuing debt or doing a capital project. Just goes down the list of items. I think this is not all-inclusive, as you see from the bottom line, but other criteria. There's always going to be other corresponding criteria. I think some of the key issues in this regard, sometimes we get money, sometimes we might get a grant. It'll, clearly, if we get a grant to build a building, that will go up on the priority as far as a capital project. We'll move that right, right to the front of the line because it's not going to cost anything relative to the local dollars. Or if we get a five-for-one grant or something like that. So resources is an issue. It's a big prioritization issue. The more, the less we spend locally, the higher up it would move on a priority scale. Sources of funding, cost versus benefit, if we can build a building and save more than the cost of the building as far as leases, then that makes a lot of sense. So there's a lot of analysis that's done relative to this capital projects plan, and it kind of starts with a wish list from the departments, but it also is fine-tuned by our office as we go through the process. I think it was working before. Oh, there it goes. Okay. This chart is our current general fund debt. This is what we are currently paying, this is our current cost, this is our, the cost of the projects are, okay. The cost of the projects that we currently have in the debt is 91 million point seven. Up here is a description of what we have as far as our current general fund debt. This is, again, by general fund debt, we mean that it's in our debt service budget. Okay? Certain, there are some debt out there within the departments. We've tried to isolate from about, let's say, six, eight years ago, we've tried to move all of the departmental debt into the general fund. If, once your board approves that debt, we pay, it's generally paid for out of general fund debt service budget unit. So instead of each individual department carrying their own debt service and their own payment, we generally carry it in this debt service budget unit. But the description of the depart, of the items on the left side, the cost, the current year debt payment is right here. It's about 12.1 million dollars of current year debt payment in the general fund. About almost 7 million dollars of that is offset by revenue. If you see, for example, this first one, well, let's go down to this one here with the JJC Courts Building. The debt service, the debt payment on that building is 1.445 million dollars. We have revenue coming in from a trust fund of 1.445 million dollars to cover that entire amount. And therefore, our net cost from a general fund standpoint is zero. So we have that fully revenue offset, that's the JJC courthouse.
So is that, I'm sorry, is that fully amortized then for about, what, 15 years or 10?
These are 15, generally speaking, these are 15-year projects, correct? These are amortized over, the debt is amortized over a 15-year period. There are exceptions to that, but as a general rule...
Generally, it's 15 years for amortization.
Yes. As we get through the process, we'll see, like, the Medical Center expansion or reconstruction is going to be a longer, a longer timeframe, just because of affordability issue.
Generally, about 15 years.
Generally, about 15 years. So this is what we currently have in our budget. If you look at the total, the total amount that we have is 12.1 million dollars of debt payment with almost 7 million dollars of revenue offset, leaving a net amount of 5.2 million in the general fund as a net debt service amount, which is very, very low relative to other benchmarks.
Can I ask a question on the Land Records Management System? Wasn't that a, has some enterprise money in there too?
Yes, it does. And you'll see that the non-gen, we'll see non-general fund, this is the current year and the last year of the debt payment. As we get to the multi-year, we'll show you a multi-year projection on these debt payments. And that number for the general fund will go away, but it'll be spread among the, it'll still be general fund, but it's, it's combined within the RMA, Resource Management Agency. This is one of those exceptions to the rule. We have a lot of rules, but we also have...
Like the fire district was participating in that and...
Yes. Basically, they will pay, fire, fire and Public Works will both be helping to offset the cost of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Here is our potential, what we've identified as potential general fund debt. If you look at the items going right down the left side, Work For Lo Housing Replacement, VCFMS Upgrade, Property Tax System, these were all, in general, these were all presented to your board last June. Part of the, part of our process is to identify what we think is going to be high priority from your board's standpoint. We've also identified, these, these items down here at the bottom are others that we have not identified as, as high of priority, let's say. So we have not included them in our long-term plan. So those come down to, that's how we kind of reconcile the five-year capital projects plan that we present to you in June with our overall potential general fund debt. So the items are listed here on the left side, the cost that we expect, the estimated cost of those systems, for example, the property tax system, 19.7 million, about, we would expect that, and that's amortized over a seven-year period or, excuse me, a 10-year period because it's a IT system, and it's going to be a shorter period of time that we amortize those. So that's over a 10-year period. So it's 2.3 million dollars, almost 2.4 million dollars a year debt service, these are estimated amounts, with a little bit of offset just due to the fact that we think we're going to be saving some money and having some cut costs in some various departments. So we expect the net to be a little over 2 million dollars of net general fund debt payment. So that's how this particular chart reads. We expect the potential new debt payments, about 86 million dollars of cost, debt, annual debt payments, about 8.4 million, about a little over a million dollars of revenue offset. So that increases the general fund over the years by about 7.3 million dollars.
And the JJC office, there's no offset dollars for that?
Not at this time, either. We would identify some lease savings, but not, not significant amounts at this time because I think most of it's just crowded, a crowded situation that we would expand into that area. So right now, we don't have any, there will be some, but identified, and even, for example, in the, on the VCFMS upgrade, there will be some revenue offset, but that's hard to identify because that rolls through the cost allocation plan and those types of things. There will be some revenue offset. It's a little bit more difficult to, to identify that, those specific dollars.
At this time?
Yes.
Paul, if I can ask you, which ones of these are, what priority are we in here? Is this, is on them, is there a priority list, or is there some that are, have to be done, when, what dates?
They would generally be the same, all at the same level of priority. Some have to be, some should be done before others. For example, from our standpoint, we think the property tax system is a big, big priority because of the fact that it's our major revenue source. That's our office speaking and saying, hey, this is, this is a big priority for us relative to the JJC offices is much lower on that because...
That's what I was going to say, the offices or the solar or some of these other ones that are darn not going to make...
Correct, correct. Now, solar, that's, that's a lower priority from that standpoint, but if the net, if we expect the net debt service payment to be zero, then it makes a lot more sense to go ahead and go ahead and do those types of projects.
Right, right.
So that, that's where it kind of moves up on that priority scale. Yeah.
If there's guarantees, yeah, that does say, yeah.
I have two questions on this also. One is, the Sheriff's Department hasn't put in any requests for upgrading their lab space. I know it's in a basement and pretty crowded in there. That's not...
That's not on this list, no. And I think they've, they've done a lot of rehab on their lab space and over the years. So I, this is not on the...
And let's see, the other question I had, the solar energy projects, sometimes, well, the last time we did a solar project, we... well, the last time we did a solar project, we immediately reached, you know, a cost savings. So, is that part of the calculation in terms of revenue offset?
Yes, that would be the revenue. We would expect that this, again, a solar project generally will pay for itself over a 20-year period. That's what, that's the ballpark estimate right now. So, that we may have to borrow over a 20-year period rather than a 10, if we borrow over, even if we borrow over a 15-year period, we would see those last five years, we would see accelerated savings because our debt service would go away. So, we would see, overall, it would break even.
You know, a lot of it has to do with how you do it, but there are, you know, companies out there that will actually put them on for you. You don't have to pay for the equipment, and then you get to pay basically what you'd be paying anyway in electricity charges. So, you know, I'm just wondering about if that is totally considered in that amount.
We've done, yeah, we've actually incorporated that already. We've done those purchase, power purchase agreements already. This is not a power purchase agreement. This is just, if we put in, we think that we would actually save more money going this route, doing it ourselves rather than a power, excuse me, a power purchase agreement. So, that's what, that's why we have this on our list.
Okay, it, it just doesn't look to be penciling out as well as I would anticipate in terms of offset as you have it here, but maybe it's for, you don't draw it farther out in time?
This is, this is over a 20, basically, a 20-year period. We would expect it to be zero, zero net costs. I'm 434,000 dollars in debt service and 434,000 dollars in revenue offset. Does that make sense? So, it's really a zero, zero cost.
Completely revenue offset, yeah.
Okay, okay. Where it says revenue offset, I'm just seeing half a million, you know, 434,000.
434 on the debt, yeah. If you look up here, there's the debt services, 434, the revenue offset's 434, and then the, so the net debt payment is zero under that scenario.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
Does that pencil out better? That way, okay.
Because you also think if you spend 5 million dollars for solar, you could save more than 400,000 dollars a year.
Well, that, yeah, that's-
That's what you're hoping, yeah.
Well, that's your hoping, but in, in general, we're, this is over a 20-year period. After the 20-year period, you may, if, assuming that the solar panels are still working, then you would see significant savings at that point in time.
And I think, two thoughts on that. We're being very conservative and want to sort of underestimate, and yet, we are still prioritizing them, too, because your board has prioritized these projects for us going forward in our strategic plan. And it also gives us greater control. We're less at the mercy of the utilities if we control our own energy sources, so.
Here's our general fund five-year debt projection. That is based on, the top is the current debt, as we presented to you before, with the debt payment for this year is 12.1 million dollars. And here's potential new debt that we've listed in the previous slide of 88, 86.2 million dollars. Nothing in next year, so no debt service because we wouldn't have anything up and running by that time. But, this is how, generally, how we would expect these, these items to flow in relative to completion dates and how they affect the overall debt service. And these are, this is our projection based on our office's evaluation and analysis of the different scenarios. For example, the VCFMS upgrade, we, a 15-million-dollar project would start debt service in 15, 16 because it'd take, it'd take a couple of years of input to start to, you know, that, get that up and running and those types of things. So, same with the property tax system, 19 points, that's the one that's out there, and 15, 16 is property tax system because that 'd take several years. The VCFMS upgrade would start about a year earlier as far as the debt service impact. And the bottom numbers, what we've done is we've put onto a, a general fund five-year debt projection, overall estimated cost, current cost of 91 million, potential new debt is 86, total is 100, almost 178 million dollars of projects. And the debt payment, this is current budgeted debt payment. The first column is, is 12 million with revenue offset of almost seven and 5.2 million debt, net debt service. We see the debt payment for next year actually going down by about a million dollars, a little over a million dollars for next year because of some other, some debt falling off. And you can look at the prior schedule here, and you see this one point, the VCHRP from prior years, Inter County Human Resources Project, that's our payroll system. That debt is going away. We've finally paid that particular item off, so there's no longer payment. So, that lowers our overall debt payment for that year, for the next year. So, you see, our next budget, if, if going forward, we would have our current, current figures in place, we would expect our debt, debt payment to go down by 1.2 million dollars. Now, how we, whether or not we want to do that, that's another, you know, discussion item for your board. We may want to go ahead and, and keep it at 5.2 million. So, we, when we go for the next year, we don't have to go up by two, 2 million, we only have to go up by 800,000. If you, so year to year, if all of these things come into being, you see out here in this last year, it's almost 14, 13 million dollars of debt payment in 15, 16, primarily from our two major IT projects coming online, and that is the, the property tax system and the VC HMS.
If you go back to the slide before that, what could you accelerate and keep that to pay?
What could we accelerate? A good example would be, see the sheriff evidence storage facility, 1.5 million. If we paid cash for that, for example, then we have, then our debts are, we're paying cash, let's call it paying cash, our one-year debt service. We put that into our debt service schedule for one year, and it's, basically, we've paid for the thing. It eliminates the cost of, of the 130,000 or whatever it is for the out years, and we get the benefit of that initial, right away. And if you go, we'll go back one, just to discuss that, that particular item. This is the sheriff evidence, about a million and a half is the estimated cost, 130,000. Right now, they're paying about 80,000 dollars in, in lease, lease costs. So, we would expect them to eliminate the lease costs. So, the net cost is 50,000 dollars for, for that particular project. So, which brings down the cost significantly, and it makes a little bit higher priority because it, because it does save some money.
Yeah.
And it's not overly expensive, so it may roll really nicely into, into providing that, into using it to, to fill in, let's say, the decrease. It's 1.3 million there and, and about a million and a half. So, it's right in that range. And that's what we look for, is those kind of projects, if it makes sense.
Right, because if we can keep our debt payments consistent.
Ultimately, it would be nice to have a number that we have, and we'll get into the capacity a little bit later in the, in the presentation, but it'd be nice to have a number that we keep and just roll in, roll off debt as we go along. Clearly, sometimes new debt comes on, it's that you have to have, and it all seems to hit at the same time.
Paul, do you have any prepaid penalties if we pay any one of those debts ahead of time?
Generally speaking, we don't pay down the debt ahead of time. We do have a, a commercial paper program, and if there's no prepayment, no, so that is part of the debt that we utilize.
So, it's just no-
So, there's no, but on the other items, there wouldn't be, generally, we would just continue to pay them out. And we would pick, we would, what we would do is, if we had savings or something like that, we would apply it in, in other areas of debt.
Apply it, okay.
Yeah.
May I have a comment, too? When we're talking, you're looking at it strictly from fiscal perspective and looking at next on the list is your one and a half million for the sheriff's storage facility. I'm also looking at it from a needs perspective, and the next on the list is that mental health rehab, which is a locked IMD. This is something that has been needed in our county since they closed Camarillo Hospital. It's the one hole, basically, that we have in our mental health system right now, and I think it, it is something that it would be very worthwhile to move up the list. So, from a policy perspective, go ahead.
And we like that, because from a policy perspective, it rolls right into a affordability perspective, because if you look at this mental health rehab, right over here, look at that, that's a nice number to have. So, we would agree with you, and that's how, that's how it's moved up our priority list also. It's a matter of, the reason it wouldn't be, because of the fact it would take a year or two to build and go through that process, that's why it doesn't end up, let me go here, until, out here in, where is it, mental health, right here, 4 million dollars, 347, 13, 14 would probably be the earliest we would have debt service as far as, you know, getting that up and running and, and going through the whole process of building the building. But, yes, we are definitely looking at that process also.
I would just add that, and your board has made this, the MHRC locked facility a priority for us, and that's, that's, you know, the primary reason why it's, it's high on our list and it is positive, but it has a complete revenue offset. So, we're not saying we're going to hold off. As soon as we, you know, can get going on it, we'll get going as soon as we can.
So, as I'm looking at this, you're scheduling it for the beginning in 2013 in terms of, you know, putting together plans probably at that point, is that right?
This is actual, these are debt service. So, this would be the idea that we're up and running by that time, and you actually are in the building and have, and paying debt service on that building at this particular time, 13, 14. So, we would expect a couple year ramp up before that building's built and, and the debt service is incurred.
Good news. Thank you.
And anyway, this, so, I think the bottom line of this schedule is that, you see, we're at 5.2 million, and we move up to 13 million over the next five or six years. It's not, it's significant relative to pure dollars, but it does give us some time as far as planning. And that's the good news, is that it does give us some time relative to planning and adjusting, and hopefully, the economy comes back around and our, and our revenues come in a little bit stronger.
Yeah. You're, what you see going from, you know, five to, you're doubling, that's where we're doubling this cost, and you're making the assumption, these are the things we need to do?
Yes.
Need to do.
Yeah.
So, we got to come up with another five or six, 7 million dollars.
That's correct.
On top of all the other-
That's correct.
Pension, everything else stuff, right?
Yeah. And this is really just reinvesting in, in, yeah, in county operations and, and long-term, and a long-term basis, correct.
So, it's, it's a real opportunity. We start looking, I know that Mike's been doing that, looking at our budgets, two years, three years, five years, because we've got to incorporate this number in order to make all that work.
Yeah, and, thank you, supervisor. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to do this, is to look at today, but let's look five years out, where if we move forward with these priority projects, what's the annual debt service going to be? And so, you can see that, you know, it is fairly level until, you know, 2015, 2016. But, but, you know, that's three years away, and, and when you look at also sort of our capacity, as Paul's going to show you here in a moment, we're in pretty good shape in terms of sort of an, yeah, capacity to borrow and an industry benchmark in terms of the size of our budget and our revenue sources, what's a reasonable annual debt service payment. You can see that we're, we're sort of on the low end of that, so very financially stable.
I think that we've done a good job of not trying to get ourselves too much debt.
Exactly.
However, we do also want to keep that idea going, and then the idea that, who knows what the market's going to do this, this year, and our, it's going to affect our pension costs, right? That could be another big ding to us, yeah, if it doesn't get better.
But, I think that's it. We just want to see, you know, these are priority projects we, you know, your board has said we need to move forward with, and here's what it's going to cost in the future to do it, so.
And go back to that overall caveat, is that this is subject to change. This is current non-general fund debt, and you just go down the line. We have about, the total debt payment of about 9.7 million dollars of, these are approved projects. You see VCMC replacement wing is on this with no debt service payment. The reason that these items are on there is because your board's actually already approved these items, except we, they're not up and running yet, so there's no debt service for next year. So, there's 454 million dollars worth of estimated cost on these projects and 9.7 million dollars of, in the current year of the debt service. These are potential new, non-general fund debt, going down about 31 and a half million dollars worth, and the debt payment on that is 2.8. All of these items would be paid for through the operations of these various departments. Clearly, the Channel Islands would pay, pay for its own, the Behavioral Health, Center Point Mall would have to pay for it with, with their, internal with the Behavioral Health revenue and, and claiming process, and Colston Building, as you just go right down, a couple of VCMC items, and most of them are enterprise fund operations, so they would generally pay for their own operations through that process, through their, through their fees and charges.
On your previous slide, are we at risk in regards to some of these ongoing things that we currently have if we get changes in the state, and the state starts making some cuts based on our revenues in the state? Is that we may have to pick up as a general fund?
Where we're, are at risk is where the general fund is ultimately at risk anyway. I think, well, I think that in general, when you have enterprise funds, the general fund is at risk always. Even going back to the harbor, you know, if you go back to the harbor, the airports, the general, I mean, theoretically, if the harbor can't make their debt service payment, it would come back. Same with VCMC. That, our biggest risk from a general fund standpoint is the medical center, and the amount, they have a significant amount of debt relative to the rest of the county. They have the most debt. So, they would be the highest risk.
But, but, I mean, in the harbor, is as an enterprise fund, it tries to pay its debts based on production revenue, which it does for us now. But, is there anything that we're going to see with this billion-dollar hit, where, you know, that the state's not having this billion dollars, they're going to take some hits? Do we see anything that's going to slowly start to come as the next one comes that we're already on the hook for, that we have to be careful about doing anything new?
Not that, not that we've seen so far, but it would be in the, it would be really in the health-
Health and new.
Healthcare area, correct, and medical center. And they're a lot more able to talk to that specific item than I am relative to those, those funds. But, so far, we haven't seen significant impacts relative to those dollars. Most of it is the federal dollars, and we haven't seen the 50%, in general, a 50% match on those, a lot of those items.
Great, okay. Paul, Paul, real quick on the boat lunch ramp, for example, that 5 million, that's paid through, we have grant money, so, right, to that enterprise fund?
I'd have to get, I'd have to look at that one specifically. I can't, I don't know off the top. I don't, I don't know. We may be able to identify that relative to the cost of it versus the, and if we go, let me go to that. The, we'll go to, this is the five-year projection for the non-general fund. This is the current debt, and then we have the launch ramp rebuild is right here, 5 million dollars, 434. I don't, I can't identify whether or not they have a grant for that. Looks like they would have a debt payment, though, so there wouldn't be a grant completely.
Uh-huh. But, doesn't it have an offset there?
There may be some offset, but in general, it'd be 400,000 dollars a year as far as debt service relative to that particular item. Anyway, this is potential non-general fund debt. This is, this is the projection of the current debt for over-
Paul, that is from the fuel tax, you know, the launch ramp, you know, that's where we're getting some revenues from that, too, just for info.
Okay, that, that could very well be, yeah. And I'd have to, I'd have to check on that specifically with, with Harbor.
Okay.
This is non-general, five-year capital debt projection. I think the key issue, the key item here is this replacement wing at 275 million, about 15 million dollars a year debt service starting in 15, 16. VCMC is ramping up their operations, ramping up their, their claiming ramp, and doing a lot of things to make sure that that's in place. 275 is a ballpark estimate. We, it's closer to 265, but we, we gave them 10 million dollars of borrowability for some fixtures or some, or some equipments. But, that number is just a, at this point, a round, big round number. But, we expect, and, and the debt service on that is over, I'd have to say 25 or 30-year period. It's a lot longer period. I think it's a 30-year period. So, it's significant, this would be a significant amount of money, obviously, 15 million dollars a year, and it'd be over a 30-year period, which, which is contrary to the 15-year baseline, but the 15 years is what we have had in general for the general fund debt. This is, this is being paid for completely out of VCMC operation, so we've spread that over a longer period of time to reduce the amount of debt. That's, here's a non-general fund five-year debt projection for potential new debt. That just kind of, the 31 million that we've had is potential new debt, and we've identified what the debt, overall debt service payments are. You see, the, the big spike is in this year for total debt payment. It goes from 12. It's relatively the same over these, over these years, but it goes up to 27 million, and that's when VCMC comes online with the 15 million dollars. These are just, the next few are just charts relative to our overall general fund debt payment. You see, our total current debt is the blue line going across here, and then our new potential debt is the red, flattens out, and then overall is the green, total debt payment. General fund net, these are net county cost numbers after we take out all the revenue offsets. Our current net debt service is relatively low at about, what, 5 million dollars, in that range, a little over 5 million dollars, it's right here, and we'd expect it to dip down a little bit at the, right around four, and then remain relatively flat. However, we have some new, new debt service coming on, pushing the entire cost up to that, whatever, 13 million dollars is where it maxes out, and then it, and it kind of tapers off after those years.
Has it stayed relatively the same percentage of the general fund that we are in debt service?
It has actually come down over, a little bit over the years, so, in that regard. And part of that is just because our, our trans costs have come down significantly also. I mean, our trans interest is, for this year, I think, 27 basis points or something like that, 0.27 percent, which is a lot less than, than three and a half. So, in that regard, it has come down significantly. But, even in, even on the overall capital projects, it's come down. General fund debt payments, this is just the total debt payment, and this compares the total debt payment, the blue line, relative to the net debt payment base, so the differences with revenue offsets. These are non-general fund debt payments. The, these, the reason that the green, which is the current debt payment, excuse me, the blue, it goes- the green, which is the current debt payment, excuse me, the blue, it goes up significantly, even though we don't have that debt yet, but your board's approved that, that's again the VCMC. So you see it goes up significantly. Other than VCMC, the potential new debt is relatively benign, below 5 million dollars for, for debt payments, but most of the, most of the increase is up in this, in, for the VCMC. Debt capacity considerations, this is when we're looking at what we can afford relative to, you know, financial indicators. There's legally authorized debt limits, measures on the debt burden on the community, you know, there's a lot of analysis that our rating agencies do relative to our debt burden and debt capacity, these various ratios. I think one thing they do look at, I know that the rating agencies look at our 15-year turnover as being a positive, because what, when you have a 15-year debt amortization, your payments are a lot higher for a lot shorter period of time. So if we spread our, our debt out over a 30-year period, it'd be a lot lower, but we wouldn't have the turnover, we wouldn't have the capacity as soon as we would otherwise. So, and we pay less in interest, and more, that leaves more for principal or other operating. So overall affordability is, I think, the, the debt capacity. I think a couple...
Paul, this helps us also with our ratings, with Standard and Poor's and Moody's, and I know we discussed that, uh...
Absolutely.
When we went to, to New York City, and, and that gave us a good rating, you know, in our borrowing capacity.
And I think, and I think when they look at, and this next is our, our debt capacity and limit. Our current general fund net debt obligation is the green eye, green line. That's net, net general fund, and that's very low relative to overall debt. Here's our capacity is up here. That, that is 6% of general fund expenditures. That blue line is 6% number of general fund expenditures, and that's what we have in our policy as our debt limit. The rating agencies say that anything more than 10%, you're looking, you're looking at a situation where you get in a little bit of a, could be an indicator of trouble, because that gets, starting to push the, pushing the envelope relative to your operations. A lot depends on the type of operations also. For example, a, a road fund would probably have a lot higher debt ratio than a general fund for, for a county, where a road fund does a lot of construction, they may borrow a lot. So, so their debt may have a lot different structure than, than the general fund. But if you look at the total county debt obligation, and then you see, medical center expansion wing kicks in here, 50 million dollars is roughly the number of total annual debt service. Still below our, well, our 6% capacity limit, and if you go to 10%, it'd be up in this area, but still, 6% we're below that. And remember, the 6% is based on general fund only, and the 6% debt capacity is based on general fund revenues. The, these, these numbers are overall total debt service, which includes, which is everything, including medical center, if we have, you know, all the enterprise funds which have revenue offset. It does not include any other revenue offset that the general fund would have. So there's a lot of, that is a worse, that's a worst-case scenario relative to the overall debt, debt structure. So as far as capacity and limit, we're still, if, if we can continue on as we go, we're still well within reason relative to our debt capacity, because if you add in, for example, if you add in VCMC alone, that's 275 million dollars of additional revenue. When you add on, if you add 6% of that onto this number, it moves this debt capacity way up higher. So, but we don't include that relative to our, you know, when we're analyzing our debt capacity. So that's where we are, and that's where we, that's our presentation for this morning. If you have additional questions, clearly, if you need additional slides, we can provide those. If you need them smaller, we can provide those also.
No, first of all, I appreciate you bringing this now, because this is really good to see and to start to understand some of that, and start to think about some of those priorities. The VCMC thing is something that we have to do because of earthquake requirements and also the expansion thing, which I think in the long term will be good for what we do. But it looks like over the years, we've done a good job of keeping our debt in line, and I appreciate the idea that we're doing the 15-year. Some counties and cities stretch it out and just keep spending the money, but we're in much better shape than that, and we've got to be during these times. We don't know what the future's going to bring, so. But I, I do hope that we can start some long-term planning. Mike, as you'd said, the five-year planning versus one year that we've been doing, so, good.
I also want to thank you, that long-term planning is, is great, you know. And the reason I brought Standard and Poor's is because this is what was shared with us over in New York City, and how conservative Ventura County is compared to other counties, and especially compared to the state of California. So, but I think it's great, and I think it's a good picture, a good long-term picture of, of our debt, resources and debt, and how we can take care of it, so. Good, John.
And, and the, you know, obviously, there are some good projects coming forward that are very needed. I'm delighted to see that we are, we do have the mental health rehab center, locked facility on that list and coming forward soon, and the work furlough, housing replacement, these are the kind of things that we're going to need when we do have the re-alignment. The hospital, obviously, is a huge one. We were actually featured in a 2020 broadcast when they were talking about the collapse of the earthquake, by earthquake, of the hospital out in San Fernando Valley, and was saying that Ventura County was another one of those hospitals that was built in that era, and you realize, we do have an old hospital that needs it, so it's good to see that we're working on that one. But there's, there's a lot of good projects there, and I also appreciate the ability to get the long view, and that, that will help us in budgeting and also in our, in our planning, capital planning.
And I think this is a reassurance to your board. We, we've been doing this in our office for a long time. I mean, we've been doing it, we just haven't presented to your, to your board. So, you know, we, in the background, we've always been looking, trying to look long-term at least, and, and develop these types of priorities and these types of schedules. And we do have these schedules from years back, and just making sure your board is aware of, of the items, so you can also contribute toward the priorities. I appreciate that.
I know also, coming up next is an item regarding IT, and to me, that's almost like a whole nother set of capital improvement plans that we have in the future, that we need to see the connectivity of how, how they connect with each other, what the needs are. And I don't know if IT is involved enough to be able to help us a little bit with a kind of a capital improvement plan that they see with the different equipment through the county, incredibly expensive stuff.
A couple comments on, on the IT piece. I think IT has been a big part of our county system here, but it's going to be an ever-growing part of it, just huge. And so it's going to, the IT department and Mr. Pettit, our new director, is out there, understands that this, their consultation and input into this process is going to be very, very important. So we'll continue to update you on those. And I think related to that, what's important also that you've seen in this presentation is that your board and this county continues to invest in its system. These are tough times, and sometimes, you know, some are holding back on things, understandably, but your county's investing in things that will make it stronger and more cost-effective in the future, and doing it in a way that our annual debt service payment is still very manageable and reasonable and low compared to market, so.
And some of this is just replacement and fixing things that need to be fixed, so that, that maintenance we've learned from Public Works, which just doesn't include, how important that is, because it'll cost you a lot more in the long run if you don't maintain this.
I just appreciate the information coming early, too, and this broad picture of it. And certainly, the IT investments, as we know, the technology is, is advancing all systems to where they need to be, both for customer service, efficiency and operations, and the value of doing that, cost benefit value of doing that. Those, those things that we're required to do either by law, or, or to, to really bring forward the systems that are best for our overall operations and for the community are, are priorities. I, I think we've, we've heard the IPU, yeah, right, the locked facility, yeah, yeah, IMD, that, that, there is a cost benefit in, in being able to bring folks home who we now pay for out-of-country placement, but there's the human benefit of being able to do that also, and the great value that has for the families and the community as a whole. So it's good overview, good, good information. Thank you.
I, I appreciate those comments, too. You just, we do hear people with mental illness, and we don't have a facility in our county, and the families have to travel far, you know, on a regular basis. And on top of that, it's not good for the patient to not be close with the family. So it is, it's got a lot of benefits. Plus, our county can do better than the facilities that are out there, I do believe, so. All right, any other comments? Thank you for the review.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this forward, Mr. Powers. I think it is very helpful as we move forward towards our budget sessions in, in June. We have a motion from Supervisor Zaragosa, and a second from Supervisor Long, and again, this is just receiving the information. And we have a, I bet it will be 4-0. All those, if they will say aye, aye. We'll have to get better at that.
Need new technology, huh?
Okay, and moving from that, we do have a 11:00 AM time hearing, and I also know we have the out-of-year controllers item that's been trailing. But because we have a hearing and some members of the public, I do want to go ahead and do item number 26, which is the hearing on granting a water pipeline franchise to Cal Am. And Mr. Philiger?
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, and Mr. Powers. The item before you is the renewal of a franchise for Cal, California American Water. The franchise is been in place since 1961. These proposed extension will be until 2021, co-terminus with the City of Thousand Oaks. There have been a couple issues. California American has addressed those issues since the, the last time we met and talked. They've obtained their business certificate for operation in the county on a incorporated area. They have clarified their understanding of the permanent process through the Transportation Department for work within the road right of way. There is one issue that seems to be specific to one of the ratepayers. California American is prepared to work with that individual. They're also here to discuss any questions you may have.
I do have a couple of cards, so shall I go ahead and call the cards, and then if we have questions, we'll come back to you. Al Inez with the Cal Am Water, followed by Don Hollingsworth. Good morning, and thank you for coming.
Good morning, Board, Board of Supervisors, and thank you for the opportunity to be before you this morning. My name is Al Yanyas. I'm with California American Water, and I'm the Operations Manager. Before I begin, I would quickly like to introduce some of the colleagues that are with us here from our office today. Tom Boyle, our Operations Production Supervisor, Bill Wise, our Operations Specialist, and Brian Barretto, our External Affairs Manager for Southern California. California American Water and Ventura County have been working together under the current franchise agreement for 40-plus years, and is looking forward to building on our positive relationship. I would like to provide you a brief description of California American Water service area, our customer base, and answer any questions you may have this morning. California American Water's Ventura County franchise area consists of the Lynn Ranch area, just adjacent to the City of Thousand Oaks off of Lynn Ranch, Cornejo, Casa Cornejo in Newberry Park area, and Los, and part of Las Postes Estates. Our customer base in the franchise area consists of approximately 2,400 residents. When I say residents, it's really 2,400 service connections. The state of California identifies California American Water District into two service systems. They are identified by the California Department of Public Health as a PWS number. Las Postes will be 5610081. Newberry Park slash Thousand Oaks would be 5610040. Our system, our outline in the, in the maps that we've provided to our staff, I'm not sure if you have a copy of it. California American Water has been serving our customers in Ventura County for more than 40 years, and despite all that goes providing high-quality, reliable water, the average cost of a, of a gallon of water is about a penny a gallon. For most customers, the water bill is the lowest utility bill they pay each month. Again, Califor, California American Water is happy to continue a long-lasting, positive relationship with the county, and we look forward to working together in the new year and under a new franchise agreement with you. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them at this time.
Supervisor Long?
Well, I do have a question, and I know that Mr. Hollingsworth is going to speak, but I want, there was a, the letter submitted by Mr. Hollingsworth, and, and I've been, our office has been working with Mr. Hollingsworth, trying to, to assist in getting resolution to his specific issue. I just asked a question. In the letter, it said that there was a, that Mr. Chu was going to meet with California Water December 6th and advise what action's been taken. Did that meeting take place, December 6th?
I, I'm not sure. Mr. Chu represents, he's our representative, but he's Travelers Insurance. I'm not sure what has taken place...
Okay, Mr. Hollingsworth can probably...
With Mr. Hollingsworth.
Well, that's my question for now.
Well, but I, I would like to ask something. I do have a, a copy of what's taken place with Mr. Hollingsworth and the times we met with him. It's all in chronological order. I prepared it for the board, and they would like a copy of it. But the last thing that Cal American Water did do is, on November the 4th, we went out and split and installed brand-new water services to each one of his properties, to eliminate any, any possibility of having fluctuation from the manifold service that existed. Now, as far as the, as far as any of the additional discussions that they've had with Travelers, that Mr. Hollingsworth's had with Travelers, I, I, I can't speak to that.
I would like that, that document you've developed on the chronological order of...
I'd be more than glad to.
Certainly, one of the important things, I think, with our, with franchise agreements is that there is a process for customers' complaints and service, and to be able to address those, and that the franchise holder is, is, has a good customer service process to address complaints, so.
But, and I, we, we pride ourselves on, you know, on good customer service. I mean, in the, in the Las Postes Estates area, there's basically 630 meter connections, and Mr. Hollingsworth seems to be the only person that's complaining about the situation that took, that had taken place back July of 2009.
Right.
And we're, we've been working diligently with, with him, trying to eliminate that, that fluctuation problem.
Well, that, that situation in 2009 was significant, and, and it took a lot of push and, and, I don't know all the details, but to, to get resolution to that. So, and I think it's a service area that has, is going to have significant challenges in the future for both the aging infrastructure and, and the willing investment by Cal Water to address those needs. So, just, just a, you know, comment for the Las Postes area.
There have been some improvements that have taken place just prior to that leak, that, that problem that took place on Ocoast Road. We did install a mile and a half of main to eliminate the backside of that hill.
Right.
Had some of those issues back 10, 15 years ago. But the county was, was, worked, worked well with us to, to enable us to install that and try to minimize any potential problems in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just have questions. We got in the Lynn Ranch, Casa Cornejo area. You're also serving the City of Thousand Oaks residents, too, in the incorporated city portion, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I know that the rates have been an issue, because compared to other, including the city's rates, Cal Am is particularly high. And I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, and why that might be the case, and if you contemplate further increases in the near future.
Well, our rates at this time, I believe, are somewhat lower than the City of Thousand Oaks. And the reason that has, that has taken place on the escalation factor on their side was just the, the timing of when they implemented their increases compared to what the Public Utilities Commission allows for us. So here again, when, when rates are presented, they're usually presented to, they're not usually, but they're always presented to Public Utilities and the Department of Ratepayer Advocacy Group are the ones that'll sit there and review and recommend whether this is what they provide us, actually want us to, to put in place or not.
I, I thank you for that. I know it, it's a lot easier for ratepayers to attend meetings that aren't in San Francisco, like with the PUC or something. So we are always looking, that, that makes it more convenient when it's with a, a local agency. That makes it more convenient when it's with a local agency that doesn't need to go through that process.
We have... Anytime that we have a rate case, we have two meetings that are always scheduled in the Thousand Oaks area, or... And it's published in the newspaper. And we also send flyers out to all our customers. So, it'll enable the people that want to come out and date in the early afternoon to participate in, or come out in the evening and participate.
And I appreciate the changes that are being made in this agreement so that it coincides and is co-terminus with the City of Thousand Oaks contract with you, too. So, I think that gives us an opportunity to look at the service as a whole. So, I appreciate your willingness on that.
Okay.
And we do have Mr. Hollingsworth here. If necessary, will you come back if we have more questions for you?
Okay, real good. Thank you.
Thank you. And excuse me for mispronouncing your name, too, Mr. Yanez.
Good morning. Before I forget, I wish you a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, and a Good New Year, and I hope your pipes don't bang, because mine still are. But I just had five things I wanted to mention here. I gave you a copy, an outline, and also an update on what's gone on. As he mentioned, they replaced the lines, but the problem's still there. And in the process of replacing the lines, they didn't have a permit to do it, so they had to stop the work for a day and get the proper permit, permits, or whatever, to do the work. But anyway, the way the break was... I just wanted to again point out, the way that break on July 13th was managed was a real disaster. California American Water Company's absence of capability to respond to emergencies, they don't maintain a local contact phone number, and seem to have no emergency plan. Ventura County ordinances, 4032 and 4062, are 18 and 17 years old, respectively, and I think they needed to be updated. Again, I've already mentioned California American Water Company has started to work on more than one occasion without obtaining the proper permits first. I would like to request the board to see if they can put some pressure on the California Public Utility Commission to enforce some of the rules that the California American Water Company has agreed to do, such as the emergency situation and so forth, and they're not doing. I have three questions. The first one is, there's a provision in the resolution of how an overpayment by California American is to be resolved, but nothing about an underpayment. Seems to me it should be the other way around. The second question, is California American Water Company violates the franchise agreement? Ventura County's only option is to terminate the franchise. My question is, if the franchise is terminated, what would happen then? My third question is, California American Water Company is using their customer mailing list to sell insurance. And the question is, is this in violation of any state... Excuse me, federal, state, or Ventura County rules or regulations, license requirements, and so forth? As far as I could tell, they have no business license to do any kind of business in the county, and so I think the insurance would fall under that. I believe the utilities are exempt from getting business license. Again, after the pipes were replaced, the billing I got to that month was over $900 more than the normal monthly bill. They've corrected one so far, but one has not been corrected. And again, I'm still having the same surges. I recorded yesterday four in about a 30-minute period, and as I've mentioned in the literature I've given you, I videoed my water pressure gauge, doing all the vibrations, and you can hear the pipes hammering on it. So, I don't do that every day and every minute, but every several days, and it varies from time to time. The only difference I can notice, the last, I would say, the last two or three months, they seem to be less frequent and less violent as they have been in the past. They keep telling me they've made no adjustments, done any repairs or anything, but it's pretty hard for me to believe. Unless you have some questions?
I do, Mr. Hollingsworth. I had asked the question, and it was said that Mr. Chu actually represents the insurance in their company. And in your letter, you referenced a December 6th date that they advised you of what next action to be taken. Has there been anything since then?
I'm sorry?
Any action or communication since then?
Well, I've never contacted the insurance company. They've always contacted me.
Okay.
And I don't understand the relationship between California American and Travelers Insurance, their insurer. But all the people I've talked to from the insurance company, they've admitted they don't have any background or any knowledge in plumbing and water systems. And also, the Vice President of Operations, he actually came to the House one time, Mr. Zimmens. He's a very nice gentleman, but again, he said he has no knowledge in water systems or plumbing. And again, as I've heard from day one, why don't they hire somebody that's finding out really what's going on? They apparently refused to do that, and they refused to put a sensitive gauge that would record these surges out on their system.
Okay. Did you receive a copy? Have you been given a copy of the chronology that was developed by Mr. Yanez?
I'm sorry?
The chronology?
No, I haven't.
Okay. I'd like you to take a look at it, and we can talk offline as to any questions you have concerning this chronology. I have, on the last page, under March 3rd of this year, there's a statement made that Mr. Hollingsworth refuses to agree to any of the proposed options to interior plumbing. Now, I don't want to get into it here at the dais, but that's something I think I'd like to talk with you further about.
No, I stated, number one, before they hired the expert, I hired a licensed plumber to check it. Soon as they found out I was the only house in the area, they said, "Oh, your fire sprinklers are what causing these surges."
Right.
And so, finally, the insurance company hired this expert, and he immediately determined, and as I've said in there, it's not in the house, it's coming from an outside source.
Okay.
But he put this caveat in that it may be the neighbor causing the surges. That's why they replaced the lines. And as I've told them in writing, there's no problem. They can have anybody come in and inspect it, any guy.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You take a look at that, and we can talk later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor White, yes. Did you have a comment, question?
Questions for Mr. Philiger. Those raised in Mr. Hollingsworth's letter to the Clerk of the Board on the last page as to that the regulation addresses overpayments, but nothing about underpayments.
There's a provision within the franchise ordinance for auditing the franchisee, and if there are underpayments, within a certain amount, the franchisee has to pay for the audit, and there are penalties for underpayment.
Okay. All right. And then the other question on the...
On the termination, the only... Unfortunately, again, because of the way the statutes are written, we can put penalties in there, but the ratepayers end up paying for them. There is a provision within the ordinance, if we have violations, to notify the franchisee and give them time to fix it. And generally, this has been a process that's worked, rather than a system of fines that would end up being paid by the customers.
Okay. All right. The selling the mailing list to insurance, I think that's probably more a CPUC question, maybe.
Right, and my understanding from the franchisee is they're not selling the...
Yeah.
I don't know how I got it.
Understand.
That's their position.
That's my question.
Thank you. Any other questions? I also want to thank you in taking Mr. Hollingsworth's suggestions, working with the City of Thousand Oaks on their contract, and seeing that they are co-terminate at the same time and other features. I think that's a good idea. Appreciate you bringing that forward, Mr. Hollingsworth, and we got a more updated contract as a result of that, so I think that's a good idea. At this time, are there any other questions on the Board of Supervisors on this? And again, this is the continuing the Cal-Am contract and not having that many options available to us.
Right. And I just, one, I appreciate the work that the additional work staff has done on this, and certainly, as was said in the board letter, the public input and comments helped this now to be a better agreement brought forward to us. And I just... The customer service side of these franchises is very important, I think, to all board members, certainly to all residents, that they feel they're listened to and issues addressed. So, I think there's been good work. I thank you for that, Mr. Philiger.
Can we get that, and then we have a motion?
If I can get my... I will motion to approve it.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and... May I have Supervisor White seconding that, if we could all vote?
And I'll look to my staff person. Ashley, if you would connect up with Mr. Yanez and get some business cards so we can continue to work on this issue. Thank you.
And again, it was nice that the Cal-Am did come this day.
I do appreciate them coming, yes.
Let me ask our CEO's office, do you have an opinion on... We have the 11:00 AM time certain, and we also have that trailing item with the auditor controller staff who are waiting patiently here.
I have a sense of timing on 27. How long the presentation will be, or...
10 minutes.
10 minutes.
Okay, so...
Wait, you okay? You okay?
Okay, then let's go ahead and do our item 27, 11:00 AM time certain, and this is regarding the statewide groundwater elevation program, and I think a very positive thing for your department.
Yes. Good morning, Chair Parks, Board members, and Mr. Powers. For the record, I'm Gerhard Hubner, Deputy Director with the Watershed Protection District. I'm here before you today with a good news status report on the Watershed Protection District's efforts on the Umbrella Monitoring Entity for Ventura County as part of the California Statewide Groundwater Elevation Monitoring Program, or CASGEM program. If you recall, I was here before your board exactly one year ago, when your board approved the district notifying DWR of its interest in becoming the Umbrella Monitoring Entity for Ventura County. But first, I'd like to do a few introductions, if I may, and some recognition. First, from the Watershed Protection District staff, several folks, staff that are behind the scenes, that collect our groundwater monitoring measurements and our groundwater samples, and do our water well permitting, as well as the well installation and abandonment program. Jeff Dorrington and Barbara Council, will you please stand up, please? They're water resource specialists within the groundwater section. And Rick Bruguts is our county groundwater manager. Well, thank you, thank you. And today, we are fortunate to have representatives from the state's Department of Water Resources. First is Dr. Timothy Ross, Chief of the Groundwater Section of the Southern Region Office of DWR. Mr. Ross is the Southern Region Contact and Coordinator for the CASGEM program. Accompanying him today as well is Anita Remy, Engineering Geologist with the Groundwater Section, is also working on the CASGEM program. In our presentation today, and I'll be... Will be very brief, it'll be a joint presentation. Dr. Ross will brief you on the first six items of the bulleted list you see there. He'll then turn it back over to me, while I will describe a little bit of Ventura County's program, as well as some concluding remarks. So, with that, I'd like to invite Dr. Ross to come up and continue the presentation.
Thank you, and thank you for having me today, here for such a great event. I'm really proud to be here to talk about the county and the county's watershed district, and all of the work that they put in, and how well they've... We've been able to work with them. Anita Remy is my staff member, and she's been my second-hand, my right-hand, in working with the county staff in the CASGEM program. The... A little brief history is, this was legislated as part of the water bills put together by or forwarded by Governor Schwarzenegger in the fall of 2009. And it put DWR in charge of putting together and setting up a monitoring system for all of the groundwater basins, all the elevations in all the groundwater basins in California. One of the constituencies, or we need to make these elevations readily and widely available, publicly available. And the DWR continue to maintain its current network and work closely with local agencies. There are about 515 groundwater basins and sub-basins in California, about 220 of those in the Southern Region, which includes Ventura County. And groundwater is very important to Californians. On average, about 30% of the water supply comes from groundwater. During drought years, up to 40% comes from groundwater. Here's a map showing the different regions that DWR uses. Ventura County is in the South Coast region, where about 33% of the average water supply comes from groundwater. About 15 million acre feet is pumped statewide. Projections are about 1 to 2 million acre feet of overdraft. That's a really nebulous number. We don't have a lot of information on that. Some cities and groundwater basins are totally dependent on groundwater, including some of those in Ventura County. Uh-oh. There we go. The legislation put into the water code that agencies would volunteer and notify the Department of Water Resources by January 1st of this year that they wish to be a monitoring entity for groundwater basins in California. We received Ventura County's notification for about 18 groundwater basins, all the basins in Ventura County, on December 31st, a couple of weeks after you authorized them to do so last year. During this year, January through July, we are working very closely with these monitoring agencies to develop monitoring plans and move through the notification process so that we could designate, officially designate, those volunteer agencies as monitoring entity for groundwater basins. Monitoring entities cannot overlap, so in some instances, we have to work out who is actually going to be a monitoring entity for a particular basin. Our original timeline was no later than fall. We wished to designate monitoring entities in all of the basins that we received notifications. To date, we've designated about 66 different groundwater basins and sub-basins. Ventura County, we have designated 17. Ventura County, we have designated 17. So that's a large percentage of that, 66 statewide. Surrounding counties, Santa Barbara County, Los Angeles County, have not been totally designated so far. And as far as I understand, I believe Ventura County is the only one that has moved clear through the process with all of their basins. The next jump is that by January 1st of next year, we'll have the first groundwater levels which were to be collected for this fall entered into the DWR system. What is a monitoring entity? It is an agency that volunteers to collect or obtain groundwater level elevations in those basins, that they are a monitoring entity, and deliver them or submit them to DWR. They're in charge of putting together the monitoring plan and following that monitoring plan and working with DWR to make all of this information publicly available. The basin can measure these water levels itself or gather from collaborating agencies that information and submit it to DWR. What happens if nobody steps up and is a monitoring entity for a basin? Well, the carrot and/or stick, depending on, I'm not sure which way Governor Schwarzenegger viewed this, is that if there's an agency that is eligible to be a monitoring entity for a groundwater basin but doesn't step up, then they could be ineligible for state money on water grants, loans for water projects. So this is very important that Ventura County has stepped up for their entire county, which protects all of the agencies and all of the entities that are eligible for all of the different kinds of water-related grants and loans available through the state. So collecting water level information, typically, this is done down a monitoring well. They usually don't have a pump in it, so you can drop an electronic tape down to figure out where the water level is and record that. And then that information is uploaded onto Department of Water Resources' website, which is connected to a database, and this is a current view of that CASGEM system, where the public can go in. Each of the dots shown, the orange dots are the wells for which Ventura will be submitting information, groundwater level information. And in addition, the kind of teal dots are other, are longstanding DWR system for water level elevations. The public has access to this site, and they can go in and look at water level elevations for all of the wells shown in this view. So I was really ecstatic September 1st when I was able to let Mr. Hubner know that Ventura County was the first agency to receive designation for any groundwater basin in California. We worked very closely with his staff, and when Anita read their groundwater monitoring plan, she came to me and said, "This is great. This is really a good plan. We've been looking at other plans, and we've been having a lot of agencies ask us, 'What do you really want? What, how do I know how to put this together? This is, it seems like a huge thing to do.'" And we said, "This is the model of what we'd like people to look at." It overwhelmed other agencies because it involved 17 or 18 different groundwater basins, and they were only looking at one, and so they thought, "Oh, no, I have to do this enormous body of work." However, we told them to look at how each of these basins were addressed by the county, and we were really impressed, and so we asked if we could use this monitoring plan to let other agencies know what we would really like to see. And so we're really happy that they allowed us to do that. It's helped a lot of other agencies to address that. So I would like to congratulate you, congratulate the district and all the staff for all the work that they've done. It's been a pleasure working with the county. We've done, we've worked with the county, of course, for decades, and we enjoy a very good relationship, and it continues on. So thank you very much for your participation in this statewide program, and I'm really ecstatic to just say thank you for being so, so good at what you do and so professional. Thank you.
Thank you, too, for coming, coming here to make the presentation and for your acknowledgement of our good staff, and it's nice to see you. Thank you.
So with that, I'm really going to go quickly with the rest of it. As you know, we have an ongoing program. We're in all the groundwater basins. We're quarterly out there sampling 200 wells. We have a great database of records. We produce an annual report. We put all our work accomplishments, as well as the data, the maps, the graph, as well as the analysis, into an annual report. As Tim mentioned, we are out there. We are working with United and other purveyors to collect their information, not only water level, but water quality. Tim mentioned the monitoring plan. The staff put that together with the existing resources, staff resources that we have. In fact, we had some retirements last year, so we were able to absorb that work and still accomplish what we needed to do. And lastly, we continue to be a regional provider. We're providing this service as well to the public with our data. Goes without saying, we can't manage what we can't measure, and as you heard, the additional benefit is that our local agencies will avoid risking their eligibility for some of the upcoming grants and loans that'll be available next year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and again, thank you for your support.
Madam Chair, I want to thank you and thank the DWR, too. The last bullet point is extremely important, you know, the ability to benefit, you know, from the future state loan and grants, and thank you for the good work. Thank you.
I have to appreciate the state for making this a requirement to do these. You would think that we would have had this kind of information long ago, so it's nice and good catching up on our part to get that information. Mr. Powers, did you have a question?
Just to congratulate the whole team here, Norma and the team in Grodd, for being the first in the state. It's a great accomplishment. Thank you.
Congratulations. At this time, then, we do have a motion to receive and file from Supervisor Zaragosa, a second from Supervisor Foy. If we could all please vote. And that passes 5-0. Great. And now we'll go back to the trailing auditor controller item.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could, I just want to apologize to the board for my absence this morning. I know, I thought I'd be able to be, in fact, I did arrive around 10 o'clock while you were in closed session. Robert and I had a, had a short conversation, but last week, I missed my first board meeting because I was ill. This time, I was definitely planning on being here, but my mother's having real problems back in Indianapolis, and so I've been on the phone, on and off, with her all morning. I may have to step out and have some more conversations, but, so I came at 10, and then I saw you were in closed session, so I continued some family conversations, and so that's where we are at this point.
Well, thank you for coming.
So my apologies to you and to the public. I prefer not to have this happen.
And our best wishes to your mom, too.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move to our auditor controller item that we have, I believe that's item number 35, and this is regarding the new system for our computer, yes?
Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Christine Cohen, County Auditor Controller, and I'm sorry to hear about your mother's supervisor, Bennett. I've been recently in that position and currently feeling ill, so I'm trying desperately to hang on here to the podium and not pass out. Here to present...
Oh, just don't faint or anything.
I will, I'll try not to.
I've had two this year.
Have a good group of people here, they'll prop me up. The Ventura County Financial Management System is a county-wide system. It's comprehensive, and it handles the entire county's budgeting, appropriation control, procurement, fixed assets, grant management, cost accounting, project accounting, general accounts payable, general ledger, all the way through the production of the payments for our vendors and financial reporting. The question should probably be, why now? The current system is 14 years old. I have some staff members who were leading the charge 14 years ago when we implemented the financial system. It's been on the capital projects plan for a number of years. I think it's been at least five years that I've concluded it as a budget request on the supplemental list. We're operating on outdated technology. We're currently operating on an IBM mainframe. We're trying to forward an upgrade here that will get us into web-based processing and save us the money and time that we spend in maintaining the graphical user interfaces throughout the county today. The vendor support will cease. They are not currently coming out with any improvements to the version that we're on. Obviously, they're focused on improvements in the version that we're trying to get to. And the chart of accounts that we're currently using is limited. It's limited in the field size. By upgrading, we can expand the fields, become more flexible, and still maintain the requirements that are required for the accounting and reporting side, part of the regulatory part. It's more difficult for us to meet currently the accounting requirements and the reporting requirements, and I'd rather not spend dollars customizing our existing platform if we can move forward with this upgrade. I'm also concerned with staff retirements. Over the next five years, I foresee a number of staff people who currently have the knowledge of the existing system will retire, and that knowledge will walk out the door. So that's the other reason why we're trying to get this upgrade through now. The upgrade will also meet a number of suggestions that have been turned in to the Service Excellence Council through the Lean Six Sigma. We have a number of departments that are complaining, rightly so, because it's paper-based, and we're requiring a wet ink signature on documents for journal vouchers and so on. Last I counted, there were 14 different measures out in the departments that they would like to improve. This upgrade will meet all of those. We'll also be able to reduce paper in the county and hopefully have other savings with the streamlining. So it does meet the, your board's strategic plan, goals and objectives for leveraging what we have, improving the technology, and being more efficient in the county. The how, what I want to focus on here, I think most of the reasons that are in the board letter are already self-explanatory, but we have had questions on the request for a waiver of bid. We went through 45 different financial system vendors and evaluated the current system, which is best of breed. CGI puts out a product that is built specifically for local governments, as well as state governments, and federal government. A current vendor offers the best functionality. The upgrade was looked at very, very carefully through our procurement division of GSA to ensure that we were not buying any new modules to what we already have. We did a comprehensive review. It was 52 pages of attachments and exhibits to justify it, and I've got it sell Barbara and Sandy Bedford in public. She's done a tremendous job in putting that documentation together and the scrutiny that we got from the procurement staff. We did also incorporate information from our county contract with Gartner for information on IT recommendations, and they support the waiver as well. What we did was piggyback on other local governments that have been through the RFP process recently or have just gone through the upgrade process and what the benefits were in doing a waiver of bid here. We're also avoiding the cost of going through a full RFP process. If we were to open it up now to an RFP process, you're looking at several hundred thousand dollars in redoing the fit gap analysis that we've already invested in here in this county, and we're leveraging the dollars that we've invested in the existing system. I might also mention that CGI supports the largest county, LA County, as well as the largest city in California, LA City. And they, being on the same versions and platforms that we're trying to move to, will be able to use a lot of the work that they have already done in their implementations and lift it, basically, and shift it up here as well. The what? The what are we getting for all of this money? Your exhibit one to the board letter shows a summary of the expected functional improvements. What I have done here is just picked off a few of them to go over in a little bit more detail. The electronic processing of documents will reduce the paper usage that we have today, and the workflow is something that is tremendous cost savings. Although, back in 97, when we implemented our existing version of this system, we ultimately wanted the goal of being a paperless office, but I was told to be careful with what I wished for, that that would probably come around when we have a paperless bathroom. We're leveraging the enterprise content management system that your board has approved in IT services for the electronic storage of the images and the documents that we use, and those range from the procurement, on the procurement side, the requisition, the purchase order, the invoices, all the supporting documentation that backs a financial transaction and the general ledger. We'd also be leveraging the meta directory, which your county has already invested in for single sign-on, as well as e-pay for the transfer of dollars electronically. The electronic funds transfer is something that we have not been able to do on the current version that we're on. We're integrating the performance budgeting. We've moved, last year was the first year on program budgeting, and this has an integrated component that will support program and performance budgeting. The hospital accounting and reporting, in their presentation to the IT committee recently on the electronic health record system, they still rely on a general ledger component that they may be able to eliminate and use this hospital reporting that has been implemented in LA. And what I'm looking for is perhaps a sharing of the dollars that they get for that project as well. That's something that Dr. Gonzalez and I still need to explore. Improved grant accounting, this is a huge one. There's a rule of thumb with improved accounting of 20% improvement in the tracking of costs and claiming. If we just use 10%, that's $30 million that we can see in potential enhanced revenue. I don't like overselling that. I'll say $5 million, and hopefully see where we land. It could be that we are already better than anybody else in claiming our costs and getting the full benefit of the grants that are afforded us, but it also could be that they were so very poor at tracking their costs. So benchmarking, you have to be careful with, but this is an industry savings that they have shown in other counties, and I'm a little skeptical of it, but it's worth exploring as far as benchmarking our revenues today, and then once we upgrade, what kind of grant opportunities we may better claim. And then the vendor self-service, which is something that procurement has been looking out for a number of years, to have a better relationship with the county's vendors electronically, and they'd be able to respond to bids and look at bids, and I'll leave to Rosa all of the other benefits of that procurement. So that's basically...
Could I ask you to just speak a little closer to the microphone?
Sure.
I'm having trouble hearing you, or a little louder?
Well, I pretty much summarized the three PowerPoints I had, and at this point... Well, I've pretty much summarized the three PowerPoints I had, and at this point, I would like to open it up to questions and introduce staff, Sandy Bigford from my office, and she's a chief, a division chief overseeing the current financial accounting system amongst other things. Eric Omeida, who is also working on the financial system in my office. Josh Flynn and Doreen Sturgis from CGI. They are here to answer any particular questions that you might have from our current vendor. Mike Pettit from IT Services, and Rose Cisneros and Ernie Guerico from procurement, if you have any questions there. Thank you. That completes my presentation.
Do we have any questions from the board? I know, I appreciate you meeting with me and discussing this in advance and giving me more information. Two things that popped out of me in that meeting, one particularly was, it's obviously a pretty expensive system, and I wanted to have some insurances that we're getting the best system we can, and they're looking at doing this without going out to a competitive bid, so that gave me some concern. You had indicated it would be costly to do that, and I wonder if you could discuss that.
Your county's already invested over $600,000 in the fit gap analysis, and that basically took-
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that either.
In the fit gap analysis? It was in our invasion phase that we've already spent the funds on to see where we are today on the version 2.2 and how it would fit with the upgrade. That would be lost if we went with another vendor.
How much was that?
$635,000, I believe. Right, yes.
So $635,000 has been spent analyzing, you know, starting off with your 45 and getting it down to one-
For the functional fit gap, yes. We would have to redo our requirements to meet what we'd want vendors to bid on. Secondly, we're looking at several hours and hours of staff time for, from both procurement as well as my office, to come up with the functional requirements that we would want vendors to bid on, as well as the evaluation team for all of the bids that we might get. We have looked at 45 other systems, and a number of those cannot handle our tier, size of county, and the number of transactions that we process. Got it down to three, Oracle being the close runner-up to CGI. But what you're starting with there would be a brand-new financial system to the county. You would not be able to avoid the cost of training when we already have staff throughout the county who are trained on this system that we're trying to upgrade to a web-based platform. So you'd be investing more in training, you'd be investing more in evaluation, and the Oracle systems are more expensive. They also do not assist in implementation. You would have to have third-party implementation support, where CGI provides their implementers. They know the system, and they know the county because we've been doing business with them since 1997.
Okay, I have a few other questions, but I know this has led to some other questions on the specific item.
Yes, on the why you have, you say that the current system is 14 years old, number one, and that the technology's out of date, and the vendor's going to stop the current support. How much longer can we go with this version?
We can go as long as we want to go on the current system. The issue becomes the customization for supporting the current version on our own, rather than upgrading to what they have already upgraded.
So instead of the vendor supporting it, then staff-
We'd be supporting it, yes. And customizing.
And it's 14 years old and-
It was amortized over seven years, I believe.
Seven years, so we're double the life of the-
Yep.
-of the system.
Supervisor Bennett, and then Mr. Powers.
Go ahead, Mr. Powers. Just on the issue of the sole source, this is something that, you know-
Waiver bid.
Right, so, but the issue there is price competitiveness, making sure that we're getting the best price. And so I know that that was something that was of importance to your office as well as ours, and you work with purchasing to look at other RFP processes.
My priority was fit of functionality.
Right.
That was my first, and I don't know if Rosa wants to come up and respond to the process we went through for this waiver review.
Thanks, Rosa.
Good morning. Rosa Santi-Sedars, county purchasing agent. From a procurement standpoint, whenever a department comes to us and says, you know, first of all, it's an upgrade. And typically on an upgrade, we would say, our experience and our experience in buying other systems with other county departments, is that it's going to be cheaper to upgrade. It's going to be cheaper to keep what you already have and leverage that, leverage the training. Like Christine said, conversion is always a risk. Is your data, your current data, really going to convert, completely convert error-free to the new system? I'm not really sure. You have the training aspect, like she mentioned. So we usually look at this as, it's always better to go with the upgrade. In this case, because of the amount of money involved and because some other things that have happened in the county, we've made doubly sure that we were on solid ground. We put Christine and Sandy through some major paces on this one. They really didn't have to go out and look at what else is available in the marketplace. But that's one of the things we do with almost every contract when we renew. We look at, what's the cost benefit? What if we go through the RFP process? What are we going to get? And what we saw here is we have a limited vendor pool, okay? So you have three top vendors, one that is having some issues in other county installations, not been successful. For that reason, that's too high of a risk. We're not going to go there. So when you look at what's left, we have a potential vendor that, out of the box, does not have that functionality, and I count on the department to tell me what functionality they need. Looking at all the data they provided, I'm confident that the other vendor does not have that functionality out of the box. Again, more expensive for us. So looking at that, you know, I'm asking myself, okay, do we put this through an RFP process with nine-month process minimum? Some of the more recent projects, the Tops Collector Project, the electronic records, medical records, has taken well over a year. They're very lengthy, very expensive. And at the end of the day, what are we going to end up with? We're going to end up paying more and losing all that leverage that we built with the system. I'm confident also that we're getting, we're paying less for licenses, we're not getting any modules. That was a big thing for us, was, is this truly an upgrade? They're not buying anything new. They're replacing what they have, bringing us into the 21st century, from taking, putting on a different hat for procurement. We've been using this system for 14 years. The cost, I think the productivity cost to the county is something that we can't put a number on, but when we have 11,000 documents that my office processes, and we're having people fax things in and walk them over, instead of taking advantage of the ECM and scanning all the attachments and having them all in one place, you can't put a price on that. So when I step outside of procurement and say, do we need a new system? Absolutely. There's 8,000 county employees, several thousand of them that use the system day in and day out, and just the productivity gains would be amazing, not to mention that, again, from a procurement side, the vendor, online vendor registration, being able to accept bids electronically, the reverse auctioning piece, that we don't have that. We don't have that yet. We'd have to buy another system and sit it on top of this one, so. I probably said way too much. More than you, more than you wanted to know, Ben.
And I guess that was my point, is that there's been a very rigorous process in evaluating this. I know, but I've worked with her before.
We were tougher than usual, but you know, it doesn't happen every day. 15 million dollar systems don't come along every day, so.
Comment?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciated the opportunity to meet with you in advance also, and I think particularly for a project like this, it's helpful for us to ask our questions. And certainly at that meeting, I was impressed with just what we're hearing here, how thorough you were in checking to make sure that it was the right thing to do, to go with the single source, to not upgrade, et cetera. So from that standpoint, I just want to compliment staff because it feels like you went above and beyond in terms of the things that you had to do for this, and that's great for the taxpayers. I just want to hark back to when we had our Acela discussions here and make sure that we sort of reframe that so there aren't any surprises or anything else. This is the beginning of the examination of this project, but I certainly want to make sure that it's clear that when we actually decide to figure out what our debt service level is going to be, you know, the value of this project will be, you know, one of the components, but the other demands of the budget, with everything so uncertain about the budget, the other demands of the budget will certainly be there. So I don't take it as an automatic that because some debt service rolls off, we're going to roll this debt service, you know, here. I think that that's a reasonable policy for us to consider, but I just don't know where we're going, and I think the board certainly wrestled with that, and so I wanted to get that back on the radar screen for us in terms of just knowing that that'll be, that should be a good, healthy discussion of the board at that appropriate time. The other thing is, whenever we've done these, we've generally, I shouldn't say whenever, but oftentimes when we've done this, we haven't been able to say, hey, it will actually reduce the amount of staff needed somewhere or something like that. When you talk about these productivity gains that you have there, I just hope we could keep our eyes open for where we may be able to have, maybe not in your department, but in some other departments that use this, some kind of reduction so that we get some, so that the productivity gains that come from technology somehow translate into something more than just a faster time to do something, but some other cost reductions that we may be able to do. Somebody else may be able to do something else that reduces costs more in some other area because they don't have to spend the time faxing over paper to you, et cetera. Those are the things I wanted to get on the radar screen. Thank you.
Other comments?
Well, and we have just a little bit previously looked at the Capital Projects, the annual debt services, and how this would fit in. Also, just to emphasize in terms of the price, which is something that's important to all of us, the context of this decision here by your board today, the recommended decision, is to approve in concept. Then it would go to the finance committee, and then it would come back, then it would be, the actual contract with the vendor would be negotiated, and then it would come back to your board for final approval. So it is our hope that through that process, the price can be further refined and lowered. And I heard something about a 25% discount or-
I thought that was 35.
35. No, but in all seriousness-
I'll just print some more money.
This is to approve in concept, and our effort is going to be to get a very competitive price in that negotiation.
And I just wanted to hark back to approving a concept is different than approving the details when they come, and there was a little bit of confusion about that with Acela. I know somebody said, well, you've already approved this. Well, we approved the concept, but the timing and all of that is an issue.
Supervisor?
Well, my interest and also appreciated meeting early for briefing with you, Christine, and to ask questions, was the, then, this investment, significant investment, what's the long-term shelf life of this or projected shelf life?
10 years is what I was looking at for amortization, but knowing that we always run over that.
Right.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to amortize the debt more than that.
Right.
But the useful life.
As we felt the last one was X number of years and ended up being much more, you know, we seem to-
Well, because they come with large ticket requests to upgrade, so.
Right, right.
But this is huge as far as going from a mainframe to web-based.
Yeah, it is.
Excuse me, if you don't mind. How long will they guarantee they will service? It seems like that's one of the areas where we get caught, you know? After 10 years, they say, we don't service this any longer, now you have to service this. I mean, it seems like we ought to be able to stretch that. We may say, this thing's operating just fine for us, if we could just keep them servicing it for 20 years.
They would continue to support us on running what we currently have. They would not be creating any new efforts or measures to help us meet new regulatory requirements, reporting requirements, accounting gymnastics that we-
But they will service it for as long as we own it?
The maintenance is what we're paying today, is what they serve. They have not come out and said they're stopping the underlying maintenance. Am I getting that right, Josh?
Sure.
Okay.
Do we have anything in our contract that we can do, that we can write into our contract to increase the likelihood that we won't find ourselves in a situation like, well, now we'll have to start servicing it, you know, just as you-
The thing you have to keep in mind, though, is this is what enterprise systems are all about. When they have a major upgrade, they need to bring everybody up to that level of service because that's meeting the need of the users. They have a very strong users group, specifically here in Southern California, and we're the ones they're saying, can you do this for us? Can you do that for us? And they finally package that into a new version, that's what we're upgrading to.
But that doesn't mean they have to stop servicing the old version.
It means they're stopping the improvements. They'll provide the maintenance at that level. They won't improve that level. Then you have to go to the upgrade.
And that was the question I had initially.
Yeah, that's how the industry works.
Thank you for that.
So you're saying they're not going to do any one-offs for somebody? Let me, if I can ask Mr. Pettis maybe to come up and just as the IT director, I know the outer controllers are customer of yours and whatever else, but just from your opinion on what's going on.
Well, definitely this project is strategic for us to get off of the mainframe. We only have a couple of systems left on our county mainframe. The mainframe currently costs us in the neighborhood of a million dollars a year to support. So the property tax system being the other significant piece that leverages the IBM mainframe as well. To be sure, there'll be offsetting costs in hardware, but the alternate technology that this solution, a new property tax solution presents, will lower those costs well below where they are today. So from a technology perspective, definitely makes sense. We'll be able to leverage the ECM, as has been mentioned, some of the mobility now in getting data into our workforce's hands. And I think all the opportunities, even in that area that this technology presents, we haven't fully investigated all of those. We don't know some of those benefits today, but there is some opportunity there, I'm sure of that. So from a technology perspective, it does make sense. You know, to speak to your question, Supervisor Bennett, the ability for our company to continue to maintain legacy versions of their product is very much a business decision by those corporations. And so in looking at CGI, if you look at the stats there, I think the most recent ones where they have about 20 to 30 customers left on the platform that we're on, while they have 300 on the newer platform. So it's very difficult for them to have staff that can support, to maintain that cost of staff to support the older technology. And we're a victim of that business decision because from a business perspective, they're looking at their bottom line and their profitability, and so at some point, they typically draw a hard line in the sand and say, we're no longer going to support that. So that's just my external observations from other businesses we deal with. We find that very much so with many of the vendors that we deal with. Unless we're dealing with a smaller organization that we represent a significant portion of their business, then we might have more leverage over them. However, there's more risk for the county in adopting those types of solutions.
But on a typical basis, when somebody gets in, finds a quality provider and a system, most, what I found out there, is they usually just do upgrade into that system. It's usually rare they're going to go up to a brand-new system unless I'm really just so disappointed or something, where the new technology is so much further ahead, does so much more. Is that correct?
That's correct. And what we're looking at here is same vendor, so the, but the technology, because the technology changes, it's very, it can be a very significant upgrade. So in moving from a mainframe technology, different programming languages involved, to the web-based technology, different type of hardware, different operating systems, different programming language. So it is a rather significant upgrade, although it is with the same vendor, so they know the database structures, the data structures behind that. So that's where we receive the benefit of lower costs on an upgrade.
And hopefully with same vendor, most of, I've seen two, data moves a lot easier, which can be huge. You have to recreate data, it's a big deal.
The accuracy of the data conversion and with financials, that's very important.
Yeah.
We don't want to be a penny off, so.
Right. You also brought up something that's not as much here, but we got that mainframe, we got one or two systems left, and we're going to have some major savings when we get everybody off this mainframe system, huh?
That's correct. So from a strategic standpoint, I'm very interested in that. One, also, we have some skill sets that are very hard to recruit, and as has been mentioned, Christine mentioned that, that a lot of those people are going to be retiring. And so one of the technologies with the property tax system is one that's very obscure. I'd be surprised if anybody else in this room, besides maybe our former CIO, has heard of, and we would have to go to some rare places to find technology resources in that. So we have a vested interest in being able to get off of that platform, so. Although, you know, at the end of the day, I do understand, there's business decisions here, we need to keep our debt ceiling intact, so we'll support, you know, the county too.
And if we move forward with the system, what's the time- And if we move forward with the system, what's the timeframe before it's up and going and running? It's going to be another 18 months or something?
Eighteen to 24 months.
So we're going to end up with 16 years out of our system, basically by the time it's done? We're at 14 now, about 16 years out, we hope? Okay. Okay, great. I appreciate the information, thank you.
Mr. Pettis or Christina, the savings of getting off the mainframe can be used towards the debt, the purchase of this software?
Well, certainly those savings affect the general fund.
All of the users would no longer be assessed through our IT ISA.
And the other thing too, you know, at a certain point, you know, besides the software, the hardware is going to have to be upgraded too, right?
Yeah, the hardware is very much a part of those, that savings, and if we stayed on this system too much, for a much longer time, we'd have to look at refreshing the mainframe as well.
Yeah.
I also have a few questions. How involved is your department in the decisions of the other departments when they're, for example, in this situation? Were you a part of the process or just...
It's with four directors. In the discussion, we started with Matt as the Director of IT Services, and then Rick Jackson, and then Mike Reden.
But I know it was your staff that did the evaluation in terms of, you know, paring it down from 45 down to one. And I asked that just because I guess it is hard for me to say not to go out to bid, and so I'm looking at those reasons why we wouldn't go out to bid, and I think when we met, you had indicated something like it would be $800,000 additional to go out to bid, or were you indicating that the $625,000 that was already spent would be spent for not?
That's part of it.
That's part of it plus an additional, that would get you to $800,000? Okay, because you know, that is a considerable amount of money, but you're also talking about a $15 million system. If you have a competition and let the market kind of take its role, that we might get it down to less than, you know, less than 15 million and less than 14 million, you know? So that's where I have to look, and it's a big step to not do it competitively and...
Looking at the implementations and selections at other counties and what they have had to pay, I'm not seeing that. I'm seeing the other vendors are a lot more expensive. You put in a new system, you're going to be looking at upwards of $30 million.
So you're saying a new system would be $30 million, because we already have their system, it's only 15 million? And then I also had the same questions that were raised regarding the life of the system that we're going to purchase. You had indicated, well, we have 15, possibly 16 years of maintenance of being facilitated by the vendor. This new contract would only provide 10 years, is that correct?
I was talking about the 10 years that we would amortize the debt over. It could definitely have more life to it, but you amortized the debt over there.
Okay, that wasn't the question I was interested in, is how long will this, they provide continuing service and upgrades to the new system that we will be getting, where one was up to 15 years, how long will be the next?
Hi, my name is Josh Flynn, I'm with CGI, I'm an executive at CGI. We continue to provide a long-term roadmap for our advantage product. We have over 300 clients running the system, some of the largest cities, states, and counties in the country, including New York City, state of Kentucky just selected us, the state of Alaska just selected us, and are going through implementations. LA County implemented their system in 2005, and has been rolling out their entire module, including HR payroll, financials, budgeting, procurement. So all of those continue to provide us a long-term roadmap. We don't foresee any end dates for supporting or discontinuing the advantage product or the advantage service line for our clients. We understand the government and business is in a ongoing business that really never ends, and we would continue to support the product as long as the county chose us.
And you'll put that in the contract?
Well, and...
Be happy to look at the appropriate language and be happy to provide that, yes.
So there's a difference between supporting the product and supporting upgrades. At some point in time, you don't support upgrades, but there must be some certain length of time that you will support upgrades.
Again, we'll support the upgrades, you know, our desire as a company is to keep you current within two versions. You guys are now about 12 versions behind. So our desire is to keep you more current because it's certainly easier for us to maintain that system, and it's more cost-effective for us to maintain that system. Ultimately, we can then pass those savings back on to the county. So over time, if you get further and further behind, it becomes more costly for us to maintain, and we have to pass those costs on to the county.
Is the upgrade, from what I heard, it was only for a certain amount of time in this current contract? You don't have a specific time in the new contract that you've established? And I guess that's what we're asking, is that that be incorporated? Because we could find ourselves back here instead of 15 years, which we got from the old one, 10 years, you know? And I don't see that as, you know, a positive. I'd rather at least get what we had out of the last one.
Let me figure out how the best way to say this. We have a roadmap that come out with new enhancements to our product about every two years. So we have a minor release upgrade about every two years. We don't have a major upgrade, like we're talking about here with the county planned, anytime in the near future. That's not to say that in five or six years, we wouldn't come out with a major upgrade that we would want to have a discussion with the county about. Could the county stay on that existing platform for another 10 or 15 years? The answer is absolutely, and we would do our best to provide support for that legacy system.
But historically, how often do you upgrade? Do major upgrades, is it five years or 10 years?
Yeah, so it's normally about a 10 to 15-year process, and usually it's based upon the trends in the marketplace, the demand from our clients, and the changing technologies. So back when we implemented the system, it was the current technology of the day. And so as we look, you know, five, 10, 15 years, we could see new technologies that the county may want to take a...
But every couple of years, you have upgrades to improve their current software?
That's correct, sir.
That answers my questions for, I didn't catch your name, what was your...
My name is Josh Flynn.
Mr. Flynn, thank you.
Thank you.
And Christine, and I'm just wondering, the timeframe now, we're looking at going to a finance committee meeting today on this, and then bringing it back, are you looking at in January?
That would be determined as far as the contracts and negotiations and what we can get out of those, how quickly we can turn that around.
Okay. All right, any other questions on this? Thank you, and again, thank you for meeting with us in advance, that helped.
And thank the staff too for all the good work you've done.
Mm-hmm, looks like there was considerable amount of research. All right, at this time, this is to approve in concept, and it will come back again after more has been worked out, more contract language has been looked at, and you've heard some of the concerns of the boards that we will be looking at. And my feeling is we will hear from the, you know, if we get more input between now and January, that will be of benefit. We have a motion from Supervisor Foye, a second from Supervisor Long. Could please vote? Okay, that passes. Thank you. All right, and where does that put us on our agenda? Back to our closed session?
If I could do, if I could do, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, particularly Jennifer Storm Duffner, she was a deputy with the Sheriff Department since January of 2000, and the other people on this list. I'd also like to point out that there's an upcoming homeless persons memorial service at Ventura Plaza Park at 3 o'clock on Sunday, the 18th. It's been a good service that I've been able to attend in the past. And with the holidays coming up, and everybody, I know Monday was considered the prime online shopping day, I would hope that the Tuesday after that Monday, we would always consider the prime local charity giving instead of Christmas gift buying day. You know, the Homeless Prevention Fund, for example, that we've been pushing here in Ventura, is a great place to, you can buy a card and give somebody that card and say a donation was made of, and I think a lot of people find that more meaningful, and there are so many different charities that need our support this holiday season, I hope that we would consider that. And then finally, again, last week, what I hoped was I was going to be, I thought I'd just be a little late, but did not get well enough to get in, but again, my apologies for this morning, so.
Thank you. I think then where we are at, we have a closed session to work on, but then we're going to come back into open session again to deal with our agenda item 39, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we will be back.[1244.33] Okay. So, we will be back. And it's good afternoon now. Welcome back to our December thirteenth, two thousand and eleven Board of Supervisors meeting. My last one is chair.[1122.01][1122.01](laughter)
Keep saying that.
I won't be able to say that much longer. Mr. Dursey, this item is regarding the Simi Valley Library and a property tax revenue agreement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Paul Dursey from the County Executive Office. I am here today, this afternoon, for your board to consider and approve a joint resolution with the City of Simi Valley, agreeing to exchange of property tax revenues to the city for the responsibility for the city to perform library services. In conjunction with that, we would also like you to have, consider and approve our office to enter into such an agreement, a library transfer and operating agreement with the city, and authorize us to negotiate with the city parameters regarding the transfer of those responsibilities, and from our county and responsibilities, not only responsibilities, but books, and fixtures, and, and all the other operating items that go in conjunction with the operations of the city, of the library for the city. Last night, the City of Simi Valley voted to withdraw from our library system, and in conjunction with that, they, they also adopted the same property transfer agreement. And they are, they being the city, is requesting that your board also approve the same property transfer agreement without such an agreement approved by your board, the property taxes that would otherwise go to the City of Simi Valley to perform those library services. We come back to the overall, let's call it the county tax pool, and be redistributed among all the other taxpayers within that pool. Since the city does want to continue to provide those library services, we are recommending at this time that your board adopt the library, the tax exchange agreement. And however, we would also recommend that your board adopt those subject to us negotiating a lease agreement with the City of Simi Valley regarding the, the lease of the building that our county owns, that their library will be operating in. And also, as long as I'm asking for recommendations, we would also recommend your office authorize us to negotiate with Simi Valley on all the details involved regarding their withdrawal from the system, including the operations over the next six months, and including the transfer of all the items within the Simi Valley Library to the City of Simi Valley.
And there is a timeframe involved. This agreement needs to be signed by both parties by the first of January. Is that correct?
That is correct. The City of Simi Valley had...
Before the first of January.
Before the first of January. The City of Simi Valley had to withdraw from the library system prior to January first. Otherwise, they would be subject to certain new legislation passed by, by the California State Legislature. In conjunction with that, this tax share agreement has to be in place prior to January first, in order for them to be able to receive those, those property taxes. That is correct. So, the property tax agreement has to be in place prior to January first. And if you make this property tax agreement subject to the lease agreement, then the lease agreement will also have to be in place before January first.
Okay. And then, also, the intent of this property tax distribution is to run a library. It's for library services specifically. And so, that, that is clear in the agreement, that it is specific to library services. If they choose not to have library services in Simi, if they choose not to provide them?
It's under, our understanding, if the Simi Valley discontinues library services, those property, they would be in violation of this tax share agreement, and the, those tax share dol, those tax dollars would come back either to the county library system to continue to operate part of the library, or as a taxing entity as a whole. And that would be a county council analysis.
Is that your opinion, too?
Yes, that's, that's our legal opinion also, that, I, I think the, the basis for the tax share agreement is that the city is going to perform library services in the future that the county has previously performed, and the tax revenue would go to the city for that purpose. And if the city ceased to provide library services, then the tax revenue would cease to go to the city as well. And I think, most likely, then, it would go back into the overall property tax pool for distribution to the other taxing entities. And I think that's the effect of the language, and I know that's the intent of the drafters.
Hopefully, that won't ever come to be. The City of Simi will have their library service, but if not, we always, we have our county system. And then, this proposal will be subject to, we will condition it to the city also agreeing to the lease agreement.
That's correct. And that's a lease agreement that we are negotiating now with, with the city.
And all that to be done lickety-split?
Very quickly, yes.
That's what we have to start working on.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any questions on this?
I have a question regarding the notification to the county. If they chose not to do a library in Simi Valley, are they under the obligation to notify the county auditor so that we can then redirect the money? Otherwise, I wouldn't know.
What's the question again?
I'm sorry. My mic was none. Is there a requirement for the city, if they choose not to continue to maintain a library in the city, to notify the county auditor so that we may then redirect the, the revenues?
There's nothing...
Otherwise, I wouldn't know.
There's nothing in the agreement that expressly requires they notify anyone if they stop providing library services. If they do stop providing library services, I would think the county staff would notice that, and that we would, if there wasn't an, an agreement in advance, the county would declare the agreement to be in breach, or the city to be in breach of the agreement. And we'd certainly give the auditor notice of that. I mean, that's, I think, how it would work. But there's nothing set out in the agreement itself that would describe a process.
Thank you.
Do you recommend that there should be?
Well, I think it would be helpful to spell that out in greater detail. And I think it's contemplated that this agreement may be amended or, or modified after the January one. But to get it in place before January one, I, I don't think it's possible to do that.
I think also, the existing lease, the lease for the building also requires that it be used for libraries. So, the county is definitely going to know if that building's not being used for a library. So, I mean, at least we have that safeguard.
Right. And correctly. The, the way the lease is written is actually the county owns the building. The county owns the building, and the county technically owns the land that the building is on, as long as the building is being used as a library. So, the county owns both the building and the land in that regard. So, if they stop using it as a library, we would, I think we would know. I think we, I would think we'd get some feedback from some of the constituents in Simi Valley also.
But it is also, it is also a good thing to put in an amended lease agreement, but I understand that because the city will not be meeting again, the county won't be meeting again before, this has to be finalized, that we can go ahead and approve this, and amend it at a later time to see that it allows for notification, just in case we don't know.
That's correct. As far as the tax share agreement, there, you hope, there may be some opportunities to, to amend that at a future point, correct?
And I also, I think it's, certainly, our Board of Supervisors supports the fact that all residents can use their libraries for free, and we anticipate that to continue in the City of Simi, no matter who provides that, that library service.
That is, that's clearly our intent also, as far as our negotiations.
Right. Are there any other questions or comments on this? All right.
Just a quick comment, just real quick. Thank you. And that is to say, I appreciate Paul Dursey and his team, and County Council, working to put this arrangement together in a short timeframe, so that we can maintain library services in a seamless fashion, and may be good partners with the City of Simi. So, thank you.
And it doesn't preclude the county from continuing to be a service provider, but by contract would be the, the future use. All right. With that, Supervisor Foye has made a motion, and Supervisor Zergosa has seconded it. If we could all please vote? And we look forward to the successful completion of both those. Thank you.
Interesting patch, right?
Yes. All right. Now, I think we can go ahead and adjourn to our closed session, and adjourn our meeting from there. My last...
Wish everybody, wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Palais Saint-Denis, Happy Hanukkah.
Have a safe...